Good.
Okay, all right. All right, good evening, welcome to the South Borough zoning board of appeals evening for Wednesday, May 19, 2021. Before we start, I'll read the the notice that we read for COVID. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 38, chapter 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of South Borough's website at www.southbourotown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southbourotown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on South Borough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, so the first item we have on the agenda this evening is 200 Turnpike Road. CMJ Ventures has a special permit, seeking a special permit to allow the use of contractor storage yard in a highway business district. Did I say that correctly? Relief is requested under 17485C12, 17419, and 17490. So you have the the notice to read, Katie?
Yes. The Board of Appeals of the Town of South Borough will hold a public hearing via virtual Zoom meeting on Wednesday, May 19, 2021, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petition of CMJ Ventures, 200 Turnpike Road, South Borough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow the use of a contractor's storage yard in the Highway Business District. Relief is requested under 17485C12, 17419, and 1749E. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing limitation on in-person gatherings, there'll be no in-person attendance by the public. And you can watch it on YouTube as Chairman Williams had said.
All right, very good, Katie. Do we have somebody waiting to make a presentation?
Mr. Crandall? Hold on. We're all on. Sorry, Jason, I pulled you over a little little too early.
All right, good evening. Mr. Santora, one of you going to begin with a presentation?
Could I just ask a point of order question before we get started? I heard the reading. I understand. I heard that it said business highway business district, and I understand we're in the business village district. It's a little confusing, but I believe I.
And then. Well, we actually had just discussed that, and I think.
I thought I heard the tail end of it.
Yeah, I think it's correct to call it the highway highway business district, not the business village.
I, yeah, I just, I just, and I'm sorry to get off track right off the bat on on a hearing, but I I reviewed everything prior to the meeting, just just to get take a look at it. And I, I, I noticed on both districts, our use is allowed by special permit of the planning board. And I, we looked at it, looked at it before the hearing, but I, I'm looking at the zoning bylaw now, and I, I, in both, I, I don't know if we are out of order, we may not need this petition.
So I, no, I do think it's still required. I think Mr. Mickelson made a point earlier to say it's a minor thing, but you know, could somebody, you know, appeal based on the fact that the application said business village instead of highway business district, which I think is a, to me, it's a relatively minor point, but it's it's one that you should just be aware of.
Okay, so, and but I guess what I'm saying is I looked at both, both districts and and read the permitted uses, and they both say contractors yard allowed by special permit.
By special permit, correct. So do you have something to say?
But it says by the planning board, so I felt.
Well, well, yeah, that's, that's the difference between business highway and business village. The business village is really the downtown core of the of the town, like Main Street and Boston Road and such. This is from what I'm looking at the zoning map, clearly business highway, which puts the special permit at the zoning board. So you're in the right place.
Okay.
It was noticed, it was noticed properly. Yeah, it was noticed properly to the media as well as the butters.
Very good.
So that's why we feel that it's still appropriate for us to hear it, even though there was some confusion on the application itself, but that's where Mr. Williams was saying, we feel it's clear because it was noticed properly.
Okay.
But it might be that straw that somebody grasped onto if they're really opposed to you to claim an inconsistency, so.
Well, I think that, sorry to interrupt you.
If if you.
You do want to be heard, and I think to perfect it, we're going to be going before the planning board for our for our major residential, I mean, sorry, major permit and our lid permit, and we can, they'll hear us too. So if if we need to perfect anything, we'll be going before that board also. So I, we do want to proceed.
Okay. Okay. I think, yeah, I know that you do have to go before the planning board as well, so to me, it makes sense to go ahead and to continue.
Thank you.
Great, and thank you, everyone, for, you know, I know I, you have these meetings every Thursday night or so, or, you know, every so many weeks, so appreciate you all being here and taking the time to hear, hear us. And I know there's a few other people on the agenda as well, so we'll be as, as brief as we can. Mark's going to share just an overview of the, the plan that we have in place, but I wanted to more or less just introduce myself, you know, the company that, the ground scare company that's that's looking to, that's occupy the space that's that we're looking at the 200 turnpike. Can you share a little bit about who we are and, and I'm the owner of that company? So I wanted to ask, also ask, can I share, can I share my screen as far as, I have a quick PowerPoint that I wanted to share?
Yeah, that's fine. You can. Do you have to give permission, Katie?
All right. Okay, right now, it just says that it's disabled, so.
You have to.
Yes, we do co-host, it might take a minute, but you should, should be able to see the the green share screen on the bottom soon.
All right. That's interesting. What? You want me in here?
Do you see it?
Yep. I have that. I'm a little while. Unfortunately. Let's see, I should have it in a second. One, two. All right, did I do it right? Can you see PowerPoint presentation?
I see a picture of J.C. Grounds.
All right, that's it. All right, so I'll go through this really quick. I just wanted to share, so I'm the owner of the company. I started, started the business when I was 16 years old. I'm the only owner. And we're, we're a ground scare company, and what we're looking to put over 200 turnpike would would end up being, you know, I think it's, there's nothing better to call it than a contractor's yard. But I do, I am aware that that's sometimes, I've dealt several towns in the past, where we have a main corporate office out of Danvers, Mass. And we originally were in Peabody, Mass. And before we found this site in Danvers, it took us a little bit of time because contractor yards are becoming, I think, something that's challenging to find nowadays. So what I wanted to share is a little bit about us, just our, our company and what we're looking to run out of 200 turnpike would be more of a snow division of the company. So we run, right now, we, we run around 45 to 50 people full-time year round, and then during a snow event, we, we run over 500 people. And I tell, I tell people now that it's, it's kind of like a wedding, if you can imagine when, when you go to a wedding, there's caterers, there's DJs, and everything else that come to the wedding, and it's an event, and all these people come, typically, they're working a second job when they come to the wedding, and they all come together to put on the event. And that's more or less what we do during a snowstorm. 200 turnpike wouldn't have all those people. We'd use that site for a corporate, for an office, for branch location. We do a lot of hiring out of there, we plan to hire a lot of people out of the surrounding towns in South Borough hopefully as well. And, and then we would have some truck storage there, some material storage, but more or less what the way we work, we only do commercial grounds care, so we're, we're taking care of sites like Leahy Hospitals Network and Curry Coffee, we take care of the corporate campus. But most of our employees during the winter report directly to the sites. We do obviously have some de-icing truck drivers and whatnot that come in and out of our, our branch location, would come out in and out of the branch location. So this is a picture of our, our Davis office, stuff front, front side coming into the, into the property. And let's see if I can, this is our backyard in that office. I'm a very particular person, so I, I keep a pretty clean space. The building in Danvers is about 17,000 square feet on three acres, which is fairly close to what we're looking to, you were proposing out there in South Borough. I, to the point where this location here, even our, the our walls, like inside our offices, we've got about 6,000, 7,000 square feet of office space. And I have it, I have our maintenance department literally send painters in every other year to make sure that, you know, the, the property is up to snuff as far as the way I want it to be, and there's a schedule for all of that. So you can see, this is a typical night, if you came to our yard any day, and you came at the end of the day, this is obviously in the winter, but everything's lined up clean, we have all newer vehicles, newer equipment. And this is a picture of some of our team in, in Danvers. We're pretty heavy on training and, and safety, so we, we do training throughout the year for both grounds and winter, and then our landscaping and winter, rather services. And our people are uniformed and background decked, and, you know, there's a, so different things just to, to work with us, just like anywhere else, it's got, you know, professional organization. We also work with the community, so in Danvers, there is Essex Ag Agriculture Institute. What you see here is a picture of all the kids, so Essex Aggie sends their kids in here several times a year, and they'll tour through our offices, and, and they'll also see like the different positions that are, that are here and are within our company. So we like to, I like to say that, you know, when I started this, I was a kid with a truck and a lawnmower, basically, and, and we, I was fortunate enough to really grab some great mentors, and, and now we've got an amazing team of people, but, but it's really neat to show the kids that, you know, the trades, you can still have a professional career if you work up, you work your way up, you can stay in the field and become great at what you do, but you can also work, work up into a management position too, if that's something you'd like to do. And that's what we're showing here is this, is the path to leadership for these kids. We hired several of them every year. And this is just a quick little video about us, if you, you know, if everyone wouldn't mind watching it for a few minutes. I can share that if it'll.
I don't have any sound.
No sound?
Yeah.
All right. I don't know if I'm going to be able to get it working, but throughout the, you know, throughout this video, it shares, and this is on our website, but it just more or less shares the different positions are, you know, in the company and, and some of the community and, and the, the different employees that work with us here. So. And last, I'll show, I'll share, this is our, we put together both plans several years ago. I, I built, you know, I had an artist design this, and in 2014 is when we came up with it, we're right on track to, to accomplish. Framingham, we, we looked in West Borough, South Borough, we really like the Route 9 corridor, we like the fact that we can jump onto 495 and get over to Chelmsford, which is our service area, and we like, we can come down Mass Pike or, or Route 9 and get in over to into Waltham in that area. We've got a very heavy presence in Waltham now, and we're, we're expanding our presence in the South Borough area, the West Borough area. I don't know if you're familiar, but we currently work with UPS and, and RK Centers and, and Market Basket, all in, you know, Framingham, Ashland, all around where, where South Borough is, so trying to build our customer base up there. In the last, last couple slides I'll show, this was our building in Danvers when we bought it, obviously, on the left is when we bought the building. It was in pretty poor condition. We, we made a over a million dollar investment in the building over the course of about 10 years after we bought the purchase of property, that's, that's what we put into it, and really cleaned it up, you know, from the outside and in the inside. And I just wanted to share this because again, you know, I, I think we're not the average contractor, we're, it took me, it took us a long time to get to where we are, but, but we're not the, you know, the dirty contractor that's looking to just come into South Borough and have a, you know, messy space and everything else. We want to enhance the property, you know, make sure the asset goes up in value, bring some, you know, obviously some jobs in town, and hopefully we can be successful with the business there. So that's just a really quick summary of who we are, more than open to, you know, fielding any questions at any point of this meeting, but I just wanted to share that. That's for the most part what I have.
Um, John, do you, do you have anything about the specific property and what the plans are? I think that would probably be helpful for the, for the board members to go into detail on, on the property itself.
Absolutely. Mark is going to speak to a lot of that.
Okay.
The existing, I will share really quick, can you, am I off the screen share now, or do you guys see my?
No, I see.
Yeah, your boys.
Baby, I have your son.
In a swing, so. There you go. All right, so, um, so I, the building.
Do you want me to share the plan, John?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just share really quick, it is, it's an existing metal building, and and Mark's going to share, you know, a little bit more on the plan.
Okay.
I need permission also on the sheet, screen sharing. See. Can you see the plan, everybody?
Yep.
Okay, great. So let me try to. Okay, thank you, everybody. My name is Mark Santora, I'm a civil engineer from Grafton, Massachusetts, and John has engaged our services to be the civil engineer record for the, all the, the meetings and the, the planning of the, of the project, the conservation filing, and, and also the, all the permits for the project, and will also be the engineer of record for any of the building, of the proposed building construction. The, the property is on Route 9, but we access it through Middle Road. So I don't know if you can see my pointer, but I don't think so, but we, we're not coming. Oh, you can, great, okay, so, so Middle Road is the, the access, this is, this is west, east, so we're always, always be coming from, from the west, coming in our Middle Road, and then we're going to, this, this is a common drive with an existing property here, and this building right here is existing. So we, we never have any plan to, to go left on Middle Road, John's whole operation would come in and go out and go back down Route 9 and go to his service areas from there. So we would share this common drive, this won't be modified at all, this has been constructed on a, on a previous project, and it's stable, and, and this is the access for these two existing properties. Our plan is to add a 100 by 70 building perpendicular to the existing 100 by 60 building, open up a doorway, this, this building has, it's like a split level, and we're going to, we're going to lower the elevation out around here and open up a door so that he'd be able to drive his vehicles in, park, park in this building, use it for lining up his vehicles, and then he can also drive right through and out and back around. And we're also going to leave an opening so that you can bring smaller vehicles underneath this building, and then above it will remain office space. So the structure right here is a proposed salt shed. Sorry.
I can't hear you anymore, Mark.
You lost, lost my audio?
Oh, there you go, now, now we can hear you. It was lost you for 20 seconds.
Okay, thank you very much. This, I was just about to explain the salt shed, this other building right here is a proposed salt shed, it's similar to the buildings that John had in his presentation, and it also, you know, this property puts right up against the town of South Borough DPW, and the town's salt shed is right here, so we're literally putting this identical use, although our use is private and, and the town's use is public, but with the, the activities are going to be the same, same time of year when it's, when it's snow season, that John will use this facility to access the roads to, to go to his clients' private yards and, and maintain their parking lots. At that time, there won't be a lot of traffic, he's going to be out fighting snowstorms at the same time the town's DPW or the state highway, and we're on the highway, and likely there won't be a lot of traffic during those times. That will be John's highest traffic time, and the rest of the season, this is, he will use it for his regular landscape business, but he won't have the, the volume or the traffic in and out of the site as at its peak during a snowstorm. We have an existing septic system that's going to have to be upgraded to a state-of-the-art septic system. Right here is the active area, this is the proposed reserve area. Site will be bounded by retaining wall, and we'll have to comply with stormwater management, and. Trouble with my internet connection, can everybody hear me okay still?
Yeah, I can still hear you.
Thank you, I got a warning on the screen. So we will need to comply with stormwater management and the town of South Borough's bylaws with regard to the zone on the, with the, with the planning, and it's within a zone that is going to require a, a low-impact development, so we'll, we'll have to go before the planning board and comply with all the performance standards of, of the bylaw with regard to that. But tonight, I, as we discussed in the beginning of the meeting, we're before you just for the use, and so I don't want to get too heavy into the, the technical aspects of it, but we do have, you know, drainage and parking designed at this point to what we believe meets the bylaw, and we will go through the process with your other boards to, to vet that through peer review and, and, and everything that it will take to get, to get, to work out the technical nuts and bolts of this, but we, John, I think, gave a great presentation, and he's, I, I've worked with a lot of clients, he's, I think he's got a, he's got a good operation, and, and I do believe this is a good fit, and, you know, especially with its, its use being back-to-back with the town's DPW, and, 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 you know, I know that in municipal use, it's, it's not, it's not the same, and they have rights beyond for, for the public interest, but it is a good place for, for this, for this, for this use, and there are other uses I believe in that are allowed now, that would be a lot more obtrusive to the neighbor, this, this would be a relatively benign use because of his, 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 his summer activities, he's, won't be, there won't be a lot of traffic there. So I'll leave it at that, and if anyone has any, any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Paul is the longest-serving member, you want to start with questions?
A lot of questions following along. I guess, I mean, the only, I guess, initial concern I would have is the, I guess, the butters sharing this driveway, you know, if there's any, any issue with, with them, I don't know if anything was said, I didn't say anything, maybe I missed it, but I don't know if there's any, anything for or against from the folks they share the driveway with.
It's my understanding John has talked to her, and, and, John, you can elaborate on, on, on your relationship with her, and I think they need, there's some, some business that you plan to do with her, so you can explain, but I, I, we, we don't, we did not receive any negative feedback, and I, when I surveyed the property, she was out there, we, she's aware of John's interest in the property, there's never been any, you know, negative comment or feedback that we've seen, so we, 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 you know, obviously, this is public forum and the place to, to flush that out, I, I don't, I don't think they're here tonight, and I don't, I do not know about any, any problems with them at this point.
And, and the only other, I guess, question or concern I would have, if there's, you know, and again, this would probably be more vetted at the planning board level, but is there any thoughts or concerns for public safety in regards to, you know, if there's going to be any increase in traffic or, you know, and such? But it appears that it's more, that it's more seasonal and not, not necessarily a, a peak time in-and-out thing, but I guess a random in-and-out type thing.
That's true, that's true, and very true, you know, we, I will speak with John about his options with the traffic study and, and the value of that at the planning board meeting, and, and, and I, I probably will recommend that he does do some limited traffic study because my gut feeling is that he, he won't affect the level of service ever in Route 9, and Middle Road, I, I don't see any level of service issues now, and the timing of his traffic he can control, so I really, I, I feel that he won't have a problem with traffic, but it would be best to have a, a small traffic study done and, and have a, you know, consultant demonstrate that, so John and I will discuss the options with that, and, and for, it would be, it would be worth providing that data, so we'll, we'll consider a traffic study.
That's, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, I can, I can speak quickly to that too, well, to the concerns, our car building in, this, we, we're right off of, you, you may not know the area too well, but there's, there's a pretty heavy traffic route called Route 114, and, and our street is similar to this situation where, where, you know, we're on a side street off of 114, where even during a heavy snowstorm, we're, we're only running probably 25 to 30 vehicles out of the operation, and they come, you know, they come out at staggered times, and they're, they're gone for, you know, four hours, eight hours, 10 hours, so it's not like they're coming in and out of, you know, a million times during the, during the event. And as far as the, the person next door, I can't remember her last name, or, but her name is Sandy, nice lady, I've had several conversations with her, and we're actually planning to rent a little space off of her, what we're doing, you know, getting the project going. um while we're doing, you know, getting the project going. Um so she's been she's been pretty good. Um I don't, you know, she's here tonight and I actually, beyond beyond the butter's um notification, I I called her and left her a message and mentioned for her to to come on today. So um my my situation is I've been in two towns in the past. I've been in Danvers now for about ten years and I mentioned to the to you know, to many of the folks at Town Hall already in Southborough, I said, you know, I've never gone, sorry, my lights went out. Um I don't go into a town um pushing my way in. I I wanna come in and we you know, we want the town to want us to be there and and that includes the residents. So um so that's our position.
All right. Thanks, John. Um Debbie, do you have questions?
Hi, hi there. Yep, I do. I just a couple of questions. Um thanks for mentioning how many trucks go in and out. Said mentioned twenty five to thirty. I was interested in the landscaping when it's off season, the other seasons. Is it less than that or about how how many trucks um a day coming in and out for typical landscaping during the other seasons?
Sure. Um so in our current location, which is so we're not uh to be frank, we're not even sure yet if we're gonna run landscaping out of this property. We're we're absolutely focused on the snow side of things. Um we just don't wanna limit ourselves and say we're not going to at all. I can tell you in year one and two, it's very unlikely run uh much landscaping at all out of there. Uh but uh our at our peak uh service level right now in Danvers, we're running about fifteen trucks, so it's about half. And uh and then there's obviously some office staff that come in and the office staff is for the most part, they come into the building and they're here for eight hours. Uh there are a few office staff that will go in and out to check on the crews and, you know, we call them um account managers and field operations managers. So they'll come in and out throughout the day, but probably two or three times.
Thank you. And 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 how about the lighting? So when you during a big storm, I saw in the picture at Danvers, you had a big light. Would it be lit up also here in Southborough?
Yep, um we would definitely have some lighting because, you know, we wanna have safety. It's what you saw there was a um couple of salt sheds and and there's those salt sheds are lit, so the trucks can get loaded in the sheds. Um it's very similar to what the DPW next door has. Um likely that's lit up as well. Uh but here in Danvers, uh we have some resi- we actually have some a budding residential um to our current location and I mean like, you know, within uh fifty feet or not, you know, maybe a hundred and fifty feet. Um and we're very careful to make sure that our lighting is positioned in a way that it's not gonna be offensive to the neighbors, so we would um we would do the same thing.
We're the chair. I'd like to expand a little on that. Um eh wh- when we get to the planning board stage, we will have likely have to um provide a lighting plan to the planning board and we will um get a photogrammetric plan done and with um lumens intensity and and we will try to have zero overspill at the property line. Definitely, we won't have an overspill of light onto someone else's property. So we'll be able to design and control that and limit the the overspill to to to, you know, to focus in the light where it belongs on our on our property and 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 then we will be providing detail on that at the planning board stage.
Thank you. And just one question because um you have a a farm that's nearby and I'm just curious about the salt near the farm. Um where the salt area would be, is that going to be near the farm or did you speak to the person who owns the farm? Any concerns? Sounds like you reached out already and nothing.
Yeah, we on on the salt, we we have I I we have to be careful to design the salt shed in fashion so the salt stays in the shed and no water enters the shed or leaves the shed. And then this only salt that would be on the property would be what would be on any other property, just minimal salt used for to 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 uh from a snowstorm. So basically we're gonna control the salt and keep it in the shed. And that's what the shed is for. So the salt should never leave the leave the the building and we will and we'll design the the grade so such that the water doesn't ever then runoff never enters the shed. And and therefore we'll control the potential pollution from the from the salt, prevent that.
Thanks.
And Deborah, just to expand a little bit on that, um I'm so I'm kind of a geek with this stuff. I I love what I do, so I travel the country in the summer to, you know, people that have a bigger business than mine and and um and I try to learn from those those people. And I'm on the um, you probably never heard of it. I wouldn't expect you to, but there's um there's an association called the Snow and Ice Management Association. Uh that's, you know, national association. I'm I'm on the board of directors. I'm the vice chair. I've been serving for five years. And there is um a gentleman by the name of uh Phil Phil Sexton, who's owns a company called Wit Advisors. And Wit Advisors focuses on the reduction of chloride across the country. And we're we're part of a pilot uh study that's been trying to reduce chlorides, uh not just with, you know, within our own business, but also for large corporations. So Wegmans has a chloride reductions, um you know, uh um goal by within the next ten years to reduce it to almost zero and we're one of Wegmans uh partners that's that's helping them get there. So so we're we're sensitive to it. We've got good advisors there and obvious we'll abide by what what the town and what the code shares as well, you know, it tells us to do, so.
Great. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Uh Mike Robbins?
Um yeah, a lot of the points have been covered by the other members, lighting, um traffic on to and from Middle Road, access off of Route nine. One thing I do wanna touch base on is I see that the parking laws is away from Route nine. At least that that's how it appears to me in in the slide in front of me. And so I just again wanna be very conscious of trucks parking there, the noise associated that's gonna kick back likely to more towards the back of Middle Road. So I'm just conscious of that concern.
So the to to explain Route Route nine is is out here and we've got um a buffer of the of of a a waterway and then some woods and then we'll have a retaining wall here and then we'll also have our own buildings between us. So any residential, there's there's a house I probably should have put on the plan and I and I can um is this the farmhouse is way out here and this is all wooded here. And then the DPW is here, so we really have no residential butters but but for this one farmhouse. We're a good distance away. So, you know, clearly we'll have to be sensitive to that that the the noise at night and this this storm event, but it it he's he had the good part is there's a the buildings well buffer and you see this retaining wall here, this is a proposed wall and that's gonna create a four foot grade difference. So the cut vehicles are gonna drive down and around here and then park down gradient here now, then a loader can pull into the salt shed, back up, load the truck. But all that is gonna be going on down down in a gully below a a a heavy retaining wall, then a then the building itself and another building. Also, all that sound balance is gonna gonna create a a a take whatever decibel level here diminish it severely by the time it reaches here. So, you know, we we do need safety, so we'll have still have a backup alarm, but that's really the loudest thing is gonna be a backup alarm and um we we certainly can um um we don't have any other noise.
Mark, in addition to that, we've we converted all of our backup alarms here to a quutch, so it there it's not your typical, like you hear the beep beep uh that, you know, has always been a typical backup alarm. There's now um a new one that doesn't um that sound doesn't it travels far and it sounds like I I have no better way to explain it than it sounding like someone stepped stepped on a duck, but it's like a quutch sound.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I I've heard it. So that is better. So those alarms that he's John's right, that that sound isn't gonna travel like like a like a conventional backup line. So it sounds like he's he's already doing the right thing in his other facility, so we can do you could impose a condition, he has those alarms or or if he he's already doing it, I that sounds good.
And it's not just um because of the other facility, but because of our snow and ice uh operations, we we work in a lot of areas where there'll be a retail center or something and it'll be, you know, have a lot of residential butters. So that's why we have those, you know, those style alarms, but they're in all of our vehicles.
And I I don't know if if um I'm cautious about speaking for Mike, but I think he might be looking where you can see the obvious parking spaces. I'm assuming that's employee parking right there.
Yes, that's John, you're gonna park toys here and then this honestly, this parking here is just to comply with the bylaw, you know, he doesn't have that many part that much parking needs. He he clearly has enough room for all the parking. He would need to comply with the bylaw, but but for what is what he expects, uh re- really a couple cars here and then with this the size of this building, most all his trucks I John, how many did you figure? Twelve can get inside here or?
No, more um more than that. It's it should hold close to twenty. That that's we we like Yeah, we like to keep all our trucks inside the building. Um and that's that's the uh intention.
And 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 make, I know, and and this be a subject for another meeting tonight, but um I I think I think he might have been asking about idling that, you know, as long as you're not exposed to some neighbors and the trucks are sitting there idling for a long time.
Yep.
No, yeah, we don't. We don't have any need for that other than a truck waiting for another truck to get salt and cycle idle for more more than a couple of minutes than tops.
And the other um, just to be make everyone aware, about half our fleet's been converted to gas. Uh so we're use, we don't use like triaxle you know, sized trucks. We use what what's called large six wheel trucks, so they're they're not the, you know, massive state triaxle type trucks that you'll see. They're they're larger six wheel. Um I can't there there won't be uh any diesels there. There there likely will be, but we've converted half our fleet over to gas because it's a cheaper alternative than diesels.
Yeah, and on on that note, John told me, we were talking about the method of salt control. He he's you, all his trucks are electric Sander controls too, so they're not hydraulic. So that those all that every every salt truck that has a hydraulic controller, that's a potential oil spill. He doesn't have the oil. He's using all all electric, so. It's 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 good, good operation.
Um Mike, did you have more questions or you seem like you might have been interrupted?
No, thank you. Um that's that's my point.
Okay. Are you set then or?
I am.
Okay.
Craig, one other thing, just to share kind of uh a little bit of my uh somewhat craziness probably is uh we do we do keep this this site here um in Danvers up, it you know, really run a tight ship and um we literally will have almost every week, we'll have a site tour through the facility and um I don't tell my my operations team when they're coming and I do it on purpose. Because I tell them that it should be, you know, in a place that a site tour can come through anytime. Um but we've had, you know, Curragh Coffee Lady Hospital. Um recently, we had Kimco, you know, you may or may not have heard of them, but there's a lot of large companies that tour our our facilities regularly. And um and we plan to do the same with Saltborough, so we wanted to have that facility in good condition so that you know, one, obviously, keep keep it in good condition just because that's the way I want to have it. I want it to be uh clean and I don't want a property that's gonna be devaluing. Um again, wanna obviously keep everyone around us happy, but but in further than that, um we wanna have it in a in a clean um kind of like a showpiece so that when our clients do come through or prospects come through or or a potential um team members come through. They they wanna either use our service, they wanna, you know, work for our team. So so I'm, yeah, our team knows I've I've probably um pushed it too far, but we're we run a pretty clean operation.
Okay, thank you. Craig, do you have questions?
Um, most of them have been addressed. I think um I'm trying to see if it's clearly defined, but um just to verify, you're not running into any issues in terms of FAR MAXes or setbacks or anything like that, right?
They they mean building setbacks for the for the for the we we, okay, we we do. If you look closer to the plan, let me try to make it a little bigger so you can look at the setback lines. See this dotted line right here? That's the that's the fifty foot setback, so
Okay.
we 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 comply with our proposed building, we can probably comply with the proposed um salt shed, even with a couple feet to spare, so we're not right up against the line. The only thing and I I do should point this out because you asked that um the as a zoning table right here, we we um the existing property they they required frontages two hundred feet and exists at one sixty one, one six, but it's an existing lot of record and we're not subdividing it and we're and then a building inspector didn't
Yep.
seemed to think that was an issue, so that we just this is, we just wanna point that out that we we had to fish on our frontage, but it's a pre-existing, non-conform.
Right. Yeah, okay.
And then um yeah, this is the table, fifty fifty fifty, forty five foot max height with two stories. We're gonna be in the twenties. So um we we we're we're good on all that.
Great.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
All right, um I, Mark, I I the they, I think the board has asked good questions here, so I don't have much. Just maybe a little bit about what what's the plan on the retaining wall? How 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 high will that be?
It's it's a pretty good wall. Um it it's it's fifteen, basically goes from zero by eight fifteen at its highest.
Okay.
And then um internally, we have a high wall here for this pond and I don't know, I'm gonna, I still need to do test pits for the groundwater here. This pond may not be as deep and we we're we're working on this, but that uh as far as the perimeter wall, its max height is um eighteen feet.
And what's the material?
Uh it's gonna be large, li- large uh block, heavy gravity wall and um we're gonna design it for for um for bearing capacity, for sliding, for overturning. The soils here are tremendously good. Uh well-drained soils. Uh so we don't see any problem with the water or drainage or the port, you know, really what what makes a wall tend to fail is porous soils, couple of groundwater behind the wall, so a versatile type wall even that though I it it by design it should twenty feet should be fine. You see them pushing over. It's because when you get plastic, high plasticity soils with groundwater against it. Here we have very well-drained, no fines and we'll make sure to build good drainage behind the wall and use tieback and but but that being said, we still will propose the the gravity wall as the wall solution because it it the 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 factor safety will be tenfold, so it it really strong walls.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um that was about all I had. I don't know. I don't know if uh anybody, any but any of the board members had some follow up questions after after those rounds?
I I have a question just on the traffic real quick.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Um again, this might be more planning board, but my only concern is that not as much the height of the storm, but I know I see these trucks out a lot kind of pre a major storm and post a major storm. And a lot of people use that middle road to make it right onto Route nine and there's no light there. So I just wonder about traffic backup for potential Southborough commuters, especially with it being bigger trucks, it's easier for them to make a quick turn if they're waiting um for an open space in the traffic. So that that to me, when I'm looking at this, that was more my concern um than the building itself. That that's just where my thought process is. I know that um where the DPW is, they come out, there are some traffic lights there and then there's also the entrances to Route nine, so it's a little bit easier for them. I just wanna make sure that residents aren't gonna be backed up on that middle road.
Yeah, and and again, I I think there's gonna be some value. Thank thank you. I hope I didn't interrupt you. We we there's gonna be some value to a traffic study to to help address that at the planning board stage and we and um and I recommend John does it and and it just it basically with the way his um that his truck count and this the the size and all, he's gonna be using all small vehicles, you know, pickup trucks with Sanders in them, not not big um triaxle heavy heavy trucks like the state and town use and when then when he deploys them, they're gonna go to faraway destinations and then separately. And then when they come back, they're gonna straggle back. It's not gonna be an army of trucks coming and going. The and 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 it's not like a DPW where they would traditionally uh get the salt, go out and send salt the road through the intersections, come back, stand by and wait and idle and wait for the snow to build and then go back to the road route. He his his routes are the parking lots that he's going to for his private customers that he so eh the only reason to come back here would either be to, you know, is park the truck because it's done or to get another load of salt and or and or, you know, switch an employee, but it's not gonna be where the that they're roaming in and out of here. Where the, that they're roaming in and out of here all night long, it's it's gonna, and when they do come in, it's gonna be. Not not as a group.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I was thinking more about, not even at night, but like rush hour, you know, when people are mostly traveling, that happened to be. When they needed to be there.
And if it was a storm event during rush hour, it it, you know, and I I I drove a plow truck for the state. That that's the worst thing that can happen. They the the car trucks are all, cars are all on the road and no one can. The plows and the salt can't get on the road and the traffic jam is there and you have to wait for the cars to go to plow. But again, if that happened, John's truck would just be another car in the traffic jam. He wouldn't be trying to, you know. And 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 again, it would could, it would he contribute to that traffic jam? I don't think so, and that's what the traffic study would have to show, you know. If the level of service is F on the road because of the traffic jam, then he's not making it worse. If it's, if it's D and his trucks make it F, then he'd have to mitigate, but I don't, I don't see, um.
I'm not worried about Route nine, I'm worried about making the right.
Right, understood. I, yeah, and I, again, I, I think, um, middle road. Won't, will will likely not be the issue is Route nine would be the backed up road. And it's funny you, because when the story I just told you about getting the 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 truck. Being stuck in the traffic in the, that was on Route nine on that section, but on the other side, I applied for the state. That 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 typical situation happened right there. It's funny that, the coincidence, but middle road isn't contributing to that. It's the. Uh, that hill on Route nine going westbound is will get could back up. But the roads, the collective streets heading into Route nine. Aren't causing the backup, the Route nine itself could could back up.
Yeah, I I can share too, um, the the, uh, just again, uh, it. So when we dispatch out of here, first off, um, almost all in that, when I speak, I'm speaking to Dan right now because it's a very similar setup and we. Will, it'll probably be quite a few years till we get to the capacity that Danvers is at, but. Um, but when we dispatch out of Danvers, I like to say, you know, mo- almost all of our work is done when everyone else is sleeping, so. Even for to, you know, to your point about rush hour, we're very proactive, so we have a, we subcontract a meteorologist that's on staff twenty-four hours. Um, you know, throughout the events. And and we have our people glued to the weather, so if we hear anything about a potential, you know, rush hour event, which is. As Mark said, the worst event we could possibly deal with. Um, our our crews are leaving here at like two in the morning. They're not, they're not waiting till five or six to get out because they know they're gonna have to hit their route proactively. Uh, the other thing too, we we definitely would be coming back to reload here and there. But we also have about thirty other salt sheds throughout Massachusetts. So our trucks, um, this would be a, a, you know, primary branch location, meaning that we have office there, we have. Equipment store there and everything else, but what we do is we set up, you know, we set up salt, uh, sheds. On a lot of our sites we manage, so for instance, like Leahy Hospital in Burlington, Leahy Hospital in Beverly. We have sheds there, so the trucks go in and out of there to get their salt and they go to the next place, they'll they'll salt that location. They'll pick up salt at the next place and keep going on. Um, so it's. Mark, Mark's right, um, you know, we we're not gonna see, you know, fifteen trucks lined up on Middle Road. Uh, at six in the morning. I I totally can understand where you think that, but that's, that shouldn't be the case at all.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my question.
And I, I just wanted to add, uh, John, probably, I I, I mean, I think the traffic study is certainly a good, a good thing to have for the planning board. Uh, I will say though, uh, the question about that Debbie had regarding what what goes on. When it's not, you know, snow season, when it's just regular landscaping season. I would imagine you're gonna have to have some firm numbers rather, uh, because you just. You sound kind of vague on what the numbers are. I would just expect you'd probably have to commit to a a number for that, that traffic study for the planning board.
Sure. Good point.
Well, and and in that case, we would. Design for Max Buildout, what is, what what he would think would be the optimum. And 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 then if we make sure that we can, um, we don't impact the traffic in that situation. If he does less than that's great for the community, if he does more and it doesn't impact anything, that that's what we have to demonstrate that. What is, um, the capacity of the facility that as as we designed it. Just like the septic system, we might only use fifty gallons a day, we're gonna design for a thousand gallons a day, because someone could use all that, you know, so.
Understood, yep. All right, um. Uh, Debbie, do we have any, 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 uh, butters, any anybody from the public who wants to speak?
That was for Katie, right?
I'm sorry, Katie.
Yeah. That's okay.
I don't see any hands raised at the moment, um, and I didn't receive any, um, letters of support or. Or not, so.
Okay.
Um, David, I have a small question.
Sure, Doris.
I'll make it pass, um. I don't know if Mark or or John can answer it. The driveway itself, I've driven up the driveway, can can that actually accommodate? A truck on each side to pass each other? And will there be lighting on it or improved lighting? Or are they gonna have to put their truck lights on basically? It's a long driveway, it's really quite set back, the site.
It is, I, uh, Mark could probably better speak to, if you can pass on both sides, I believe you can, but I don't want to say that, um.
Yeah, I've been up, it would look, it looked a little tight. Right. That would mean only one or two things, they rarely pass each other, which isn't great. Um, which would be unlikely sometimes, or they would be turning around in front of the. Existing building at the bottom, it would seem a little narrow. Mark probably can answer it quickly. Just a design, because you said the driveway was adequate. Is it actually wide enough for two trucks? A mod, those modest sized trucks to pass each other on each side. The driveway doesn't have a.
Yeah, it it gets narrow, it's, um. I, sorry, I just, I had to bug out. My seven-year-old daughter came home and demanded to see me. I, um, I met, you know, I I anticipated this question, I measured it last time I went to the property and and it's, um. My my memory, seventeen feet at the narrowest and and it's up twenty feet plus at its widest. Um, is that enough for two cars to pass? Yes, it's, you know, optimally it would be eighteen, but this shoulder width on both sides and, um. It's and it's only right, right at the culvert, so this site distance, you'd see the, and this, and then it winds up across here, this parking, so.
Yeah, it's an odd driveway.
Yeah, so if you're coming down here and and you see a car coming, you just wait here a second, guy goes by.
Okay, this is a good alternate to being backed up at the.
There is.
You can even see them if you're in the upper lot, except for the lighting, if there's lights showing at night.
Yeah, but what what, once you come around here, you can see, and and then there is a a little parking area right here that you could. Wait, and then the same thing, you're coming down here, just when you get to here, you'd see a guy coming across there and then, you know. It it, and if they, if neither saw each other and they both came at the same time, it's still wide enough across six, six, seven feet, it's seventeen feet. Uh, uh, this one, you know, so they couldn't get by each other. It's just, they wouldn't want to go by thirty-five miles an hour past each other, but. It's a slow, slow drive and it is, he can instruct all his drivers to maintain five mile an hour, ten mile an hour across. And, um, and then other than that, there's really no other traffic in and out, except for this building and she would never be coming at night, so. It it's the only, this access, this. Common drivers only for this property and this property and and they, and their, and their time of. Peak travel will be different, so we likely won't encounter each other. It'll be his own trucks he might encounter, which then they can have a policy.
The other, um, the other good thing is, in in Doris, I I know, you know, that was something I noted when I was looking at the property, the the, one of the good things. You is, is, um, one of the good things about that passage is, um, I can't point because it's. I wish I could, but yeah, the other side of that, the other side of that road, it's, it's all cleared, so. So you get good visibility, um.
Yeah, this is wetland, so you, there's no, the, you can, you have side side distance, but it it's not. The, the road doesn't go across here because the wetland just out there and it crosses a couple of places.
What I mean by that is there's no like thick, thick trees or tall brush or, you know, it's, you can see quite a distance, especially if you're in a truck. Because you're up higher.
Yes.
Doris?
No, I just had a question. They, the other thing got answered with the site visit was, I was like, where are you, how are you squeezing those buildings in? When I looked at the site, but the plan explains it. I mean, we're right on the, you know, we're back from the offsets, but we're filling every last foot up. Um, and it makes sense, you know, as it has, because then when you go to the the backside of the wetlands. And now that I see the retaining wall, you know, what we're gonna do about that, because it really, it steeps off in different areas because of the adjoining wetland, but. No, it's a really nice presentation. I appreciate it. It, my question was how you getting up and down the driveway? And, um, and you're gonna do a traffic study. Which will help.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, well, if the if the board is, if everybody's had answered, had their questions answered and we don't have anybody. Anyone else from the public who wants to, who wants to speak. Uh, we could probably entertain a a motion to to close the the public hearing.
David, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Got a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Um, who was the second?
Paul.
Oh, Paul, okay, thanks, Paul. Um, actually, uh, could you stop sharing for now, um, Mark?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. All right, so, um. All right, any, any additional concerns from any, any board members? I think we've, there's been a lot of questions. It was a good presentation. They've answered off a lot of questions. Um, it, I, I'm gonna say that it does feel the temperature of the board generally positive. Go ahead, Mike.
Just a point of order, uh, do we need to vote on the?
Oh. Correct, we did.
We had a.
Thank you for that. I have a motion with a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, respond with, uh, with aye, uh, the sitting members. Uh, Paul?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
William's aye, okay. That will close the public meeting, public portion of the meeting. Thank you for the reminder, Mike. Um, again, uh, are there additional concerns we want to debate here? Uh, um. I think it's good to keep in mind that they are gonna be going for the planning board. Um, they are, it sounds to me they're committing to a traffic study. Uh, I'm sure there's gonna be more detail with the planning board in regards to lighting in the in the traffic, so. Um, we can. Discuss further or we can take a motion to for a vote.
Um, I guess the only. The only question is whether we put a condition for them to. Do the traffic study.
Uh, right.
And, you know. Do a traffic study and confirm that it doesn't have a greater than ten percent impact? As per, it's ten percent, right?
Yeah, I think ten percent is is the, yeah, that is the number. I think that's, that would be reasonable. I mean, if they're planning to do it anyway, I don't, I don't see that that would, that would be a problem.
I I I I don't have a problem with that, John. I think we should, we should commit to that.
That, yeah, strictly, uh, strictly speaking, we do, we have a, we have closed the public meeting. That's okay. Um, this, this part gets kind of funny, that's why you're, we're always kind of a little cautious about when we close, but. Um.
Yeah, so I would move that we grant the special permit with the condition that. The applicant conducts a traffic or a, yeah, a traffic study. That's and confirms that it shows a. Less than ten percent impact.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to confirm the the special permit with a condition. For a traffic study to show less than ten percent impact. All in favor, uh, respond with aye. Paul?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Debbie?
Emerya, aye.
Uh, Michael?
Aye.
And and William's aye. All right. So.
Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. It's approved. And, um.
Good luck in your next part.
Uh, okay, thank you very much, everybody. It's a pleasure meeting everyone. I thank you very much. We'll pick you up later. Take care.
So. Next agenda item is. Um. Where are we here? Let me get that back. Sixteen Clifford Road. Special permit to allow an accessory apartment. Katie, do you wanna? Before we continue, does anybody for any reason need a a a short recess or are we good to continue?
I think we're good for this one.
Okay, all right, Katie, do you want to read the, the, uh. Petition for sixteen Clifford Road?
Yes. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via virtual Zoom meeting on Wednesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven fifteen P M. With regard to the petition of Jason Kurtz, Kurtz Design Studio LLC, sixteen Clifford Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow an accessory apartment within the existing footprint of a single-family residence. In existence for more than two years in the Residence Aid District. Relief is requested under section one seventy-four eight two B one.
Good, all right, and, um, thank you. Katie, do we? Do we have somebody to present for the the applicant?
David, can I ask, um, ask how we might like to proceed here? Um, one of the things that. They were supposed to submit is a. A letter from the planning board that they have not submitted yet.
Right.
Um. And. I I would imagine they'll address this in their. Uh, presentation, but. Their Board of Health letter says it's okay as long as they don't add another bedroom, which it clearly looks like they are. So I'm wondering if. You know, once the applicant gets started, that, um. That you might wanna continue this to get at least the planning board one resolved, you already have the Board of Health one.
Yeah, we 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 did, that was talked about, and I think we decided we should. Do the presentation. We know they have to go to the planning board. They will have to, there will have to be continuance to come back to us. But Katie, you were gonna add something regarding the. The the bedroom, right?
Yeah, I talked to, um, Dennis from the Board of Health and he said, um, he did clarify that four bedrooms were okay here.
Okay, so they can do the presentation. I just didn't know if we wanted to address those upfront.
I know, that that that's a good point, right? No, that that, I think ultimately, we, I think what we'll have to do, even though, you know, we go through a presentation. I think ultimately it's gonna have to be a continuance because they've got to go to the planning board. The planning board needs to submit a letter to us. And then we can. And that's when we we can officially close it.
Um. Then, may I make the suggestion that I, our next item is looking like it might be lengthy? Uh, the first item took quite a long time. If we're going to have to continue it and have them back anyway. Then maybe it makes sense for the presentation to occur at that time, just to. Keep things moving.
All right.
If they're, if they're open to that option, obviously they have to agree to it, but that would be my.
Right. That's a good suggestion. Um, Katie, do you want to allow the applicant in?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name's Jason Kurtz. I am the applicant for, uh, my client. Um, who lived at sixteen Clifford. Um, it sounds like you don't want to have the presentation because of the. Uh, requiring the planning board to. Approve prior to. Getting in front of you. Um, the 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 one caveat I would ask is. Uh, it was brought to our attention on the seventeenth, two days ago, that the. Planning board was gonna be required, um, to. Be presented to and it it wasn't brought to our attention until then. Um, which, you know, obviously has left us a little bit in a quandary since we submitted all the documents for four weeks ago.
All right. Well, I I I think the bottom line, Jason, is even if you go ahead and do the full presentation here. You still have to go to the planning board, you still have to come back to us. You still have to go to the planning board. You still have to come back to us. So I think.
There isn't, uh, there isn't an opportunity to, um, approve with contingency that the planning board approves. Since we're, we're, we're meeting with them on Monday.
Right, right, understood. Um, the, the, the procedures I understand is we need to get the letter from the planning board, so. It's not really following the process if we go out of order as far as that goes.
I, I know what you're saying, David, but I, I, you know, uh, if the petitioner is here, otherwise they have to be late another month.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think, I think the larger point is that it's actually. It's actually, uh, we can't force a continuance. That's up to the applicant to be able to do that. So. If you. Now, really, if you want to go ahead and, and, and present, you may. I think we're just asking, just in the matter of time, because we know we've got a longer. Hearing ahead of us. Um, if you want, if, if just in this, for, for the sake of time, it would make sense, more sense to do it later. Um, if you want to do it now, we can. Well, I don't know.
If he wants to do it now, he absolutely can.
Yeah.
Um. I mean. I, I. I'm not going to give a presentation now and you're not going to be able to rule on it, so, I mean. Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm a little bit caught off guard since it wasn't brought to our attention that we needed to go the other direction first. So I, I would prefer not to have to present and then come back to you and present again.
Okay. So, um, again, the, the board can't, can't request this, but are you requesting then to continue?
I, I, we're obviously going to have to because there's no sense in presenting if we can't get an answer.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, not to be too pedantic, but could you do, if you just.
Oh, can we get a, can we get a, uh, continuance, please?
Yeah. Yes. Um, all right, and Katie, what do we have, um, on the schedule for the next meeting?
Um, we have one, potentially two hearings, but we can do, we can do this one first on the sixteenth.
Sixteenth to June? Okay.
And so do we need a motion to? Accept the continuance to June sixteenth at seven P M?
I believe so.
Then I so move that.
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion to continue the hearing until June sixteenth with a second. All in favor, say aye. Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And William's, aye. All right, um. Uh, thanks, Jason. Uh, sorry about the, about the confusion. Um. We should be able to continue it to the sixteenth at, at seven.
And then I'm pretty sure you'll need to drop by the. The office and get with Katie to officially sign the continuance paperwork.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so that brings us to the fun part. Uh, three hundred twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods special permit.
Uh, at this point, since we are going, getting into the longer one, I would request a five-minute recess.
Do we need to vote on a recess or I can just, we just grant it, right?
I think you can just grant it.
Okay, uh, five minutes sufficient, Craig?
I, it is for me. I don't know about anybody else.
Okay. All right. Yep, we'll resume it, uh, in five minutes at eight twenty-two. All right, thanks. All right, well, we just need Katie. Oh, she's back. All right, are we ready to continue? Uh, so Debbie, are you? Recusing?
Yes, I'm recusing.
Okay. Uh. Doris, uh, you are not, you were sitting on the, on the board the last time, so nominate you to. Uh, step in for Debbie.
You're on mute, Doris.
Doris?
Doris, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
In the dark.
I'm on, okay, I'm unmuted now. I had a resolution issue, so I took my fake background down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've noticed those kind of things before. All right, so Debbie has recused herself, Doris is in, um. Do you need to read the, the public notice again, Katie?
So, because it was continued.
Okay.
Is that right?
All right, I get, I get fuzzy on the procedural issues, quite honestly. I haven't picked up on that yet. Um, all right, so. You know, uh, uh, where we left off last, last time, they have, uh, an application for a special permit to do an expansion on the east side of the building. Uh, the majority of the concern from Butters was regarding, uh, noise considerations on the west side of the building. Um. Uh, Mike Robbins and I actually had a tour provided by, hosted by Ken's, which was actually very, very helpful to understand where the issue's coming from. Um, but, um. And I, I believe the way we left it was that Ken's was going to continue to work with the Butters, with the neighbors that were having an issue, so. Um, if. We want to let somebody from Ken's in here, Katie, on, I, I think we should first see if they have something more to present or discuss.
Okay, good evening.
Evening, Mr. Presomon.
I am the attorney for Ken's Foods. Uh, I actually have been between, before this board, I think this is my fifth time for this site. Uh, and this fourth permit in the last five years. Uh, first of all, I did notice something on this special permit application, and. It dawned on me because a couple of people in their letters recently have said. Spoken about the facility as a manufacturing facility. It is not manufacturing. Ken's does not do any manufacturing there. It is only wholesale distribution and storage. Uh, and I just wanted to clear that up, uh, right away. Uh, secondly, I, I did reach out, uh, after our meeting at the site. Uh, to Deb, uh, asked her she'd call me back. Uh, but then I got a letter from her lawyer, which. Now I have to speak with him, and, and that's fine. And I saw a letter from him and from a peer review study that was done, or a company that, uh. Facilitated what they considered a peer review. And, uh, I did speak to the lawyer today. To tell him that we would continue to work with them, continue to talk with them, and in fact. This, the noise issue is really, it's a separate issue from the special permit. The special permits for an extension on the other end of the building, it's going to have really no impact to the outside of the building or any further noise at the site. The noise issue is an, an issue that number one is regulated by state and D E D. Uh, Southborough does not have a noise ordinance, so it would have to be through the, the state procedure. Uh, we've been, you know, we've always said we've been happy to work and try to assess what a situ, this problem is or a situation is. Uh, when we did the first expansion. Uh, we actually built the sound wall. Even though we knew that after we moved all of the, uh. The doors, it probably wasn't going to be necessary or anything, any further, but we, we understood the issues that, that came from the community. Uh, what I would, do want to revert back to though is. We have an issue before you for a special permit they had in addition on the backside. The east side of the building with no further traffic or any other noise outside of the facility, other than what's existing there today. Uh, there's not going to be any increased truck traffic. In fact, there's going to be some traffic. It's going to be eliminated that was coming from Ken's. Their operation in Marlborough on a daily basis because of what they had to do for the restocking and the stacking at the Ken's facility. So any increase in traffic that might be going in and out, moving material. Uh, for the, uh, from the storage and for distribution is going to be outweighed by the reduction in flow of traffic from Ken's main facility to the current facility. Uh, I, I think I reiter, uh, said this the last time. I was a bit remiss because. When we heard about this issue, which. First complaints came eighteen months after Ken's started full operation. Under their facility. Uh, had not heard anything, and I finally heard something from, uh. One of the Butters reached out to us. He happened to work for a firm that we represent, my firm represents. And he said, look, I'm hearing this noise. I want to talk to Ken's. I know you represent them. Can you come and talk to me? So I went and talked to him, and that was Chuck Agan, and he was at twenty-eight. And Deb was at fifty-eight. They both raised some issues, and they called the police there a couple of times without success in hearing things. Uh, one time I think they did hear something one night, so it's, it's clearly an intermittent issue. So we met with them, we talked with them. And we said, all right. We, we believe we've identified the issue that you think you are hearing and that may be causing this is the refrigeration. And Deb and Chuck agreed that's what we would focus on. And that's what that report did. It focused on. The sound being emanated from the refrigeration. Which is what everybody thought the issue was. Our guy looked at it. He extrapolated what he needed to do. And by the way, our expert, he does do work for the federal government on noise. He does a lot of work around the country, and he stands by his report. Of course, it didn't comply with the, as their peer review. Reviewer looked at it and said, oh, it doesn't comply with this standard and that standard. That's because we were trying to extrapolate. The noise issue around just the, uh, refrigeration units. Because I have an email from the Deb was on and that Chuck Agan was on was. Okay, everybody thinks this is the issue. This is what the focus is going to be. This is what our report is going to go, go look at. Okay? Everybody was happy with it, or happy with us moving on that. And again, we had said to them, it's not our obligation to do this, but we're trying to be a good neighbor. We'll do the study as long as we know what we're focusing on. Okay? So we did the study. I sent it to Deb. I sent it to Chuck. I went back and forth with them a little bit. Uh, asked, sent them July first. I remember it, and I got the email. An email saying, look, I'm going in for surgery. I'll be out of pocket for a week. I think we should get together with the sound expert, if you have somebody you want to bring. Let's sit and talk about this and find out what's going on. I did not hear another thing from anybody. I called the building inspector this past. January, before I started putting together my application to come in and asked if there had been any further complaints from anybody. She said no, that they hadn't heard anything. So I'm thinking, okay, we resolve the issue because after the sound study, Ken's even took steps. To face the trucks in a different direction, to try to capture the sound and have it stay on, on site. Uh, it wasn't until. I, I actually called Deb just before I was filing, and I said, look. I just want to give you a heads up. You're going to get noticed because you're in a butter, even though you're eighteen hundred feet away. You're in a butter and, you know, uh, we're still willing to try to work with you if this hasn't been resolved. She told me it had started to reoccur over the winter. And I think we heard from her husband at the last meeting that when the snow pile was built up on that west side. They had, and it, uh, like a recess from it. There was no, they didn't hear the sound for several days or a month. And maybe that blocked it. When we left the last meeting, I said, look, I'll talk to Ken's about possibly planting trees, doing a mound there, and putting some trees in the area where that. S- snow dump was basically, to maybe to take that effect in the winter where it's evergreens and minimize. Uh. I, I'm kind of exasperated because. Ken's been a, a really good community. Uh, business owner. They want to fit in. They have a, a facility that's on Route nine. It's actually a lot less noisy than it was when Verizon was there, when I was, when I first moved to Southborough. and the activity that was going on there then. But I think we need to, we need to look at this in, in two veins, number one, we, we have an application before you for a special permit to add in addition that's innocuous on the other end. It's only going to have more racking inside of it and stacks of, 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 uh, product to be shipped out, there's going to be no activity on that side of the building. We need to focus on what the application is, not that they're still perceived to be a noise issue that we would like to attenuate, if in fact it is coming from us, and there's something that we can do about it. The jurisdiction to pursue that isn't really with this petition, it's really with going to the building inspector, the board of health, and D E D. They'll actually have another bite at the apple when we go to conservation, or when we do a modi, a modification of the site plan, because we'll put the building on that end, we'll have to go to a site plan review with planning board. So we know this isn't going to go away, but to impose this on Ken's at this stage delays them, it's going to end up delaying them a year. And, you know, it's for an innocuous addition to the backside of their building. I, I guess I'm just, I'm venting now, and I'll kind of take a step back. I just will point out that in the noise study that we did prepare, the second sentence, or the, the last sentence of the first paragraph says, this study was aimed at truck refrigeration unit noise, since I understand that the long-term steady flow frequency noise is the concern of the neighbors, rather than moving trucks or other noise like that. And that's what the study focused on. Uh, it wasn't a full-blown noise study is, because to do that, it tends without shutting them down for a week, to do a full-blown noise study with nothing going on. And that's why you extrapolate, you do things like this. I did reach out to our, uh, noise expert to see if he could be here today. Uh, unfortunately, when I did reach him, he was out in the Midwest attending to his ninety-five-year-old father, and he won't be back until next week. Uh, when I did get the information sent to me, I forwarded it to him, but I know he's not back yet, so I, I don't know what he would have to say about it. But it's, it's, I offered this up to meet with our sound people and with the Butters last Jan, July first. Ken's continues to want to do that, but we don't want to be held hostage for a, a special permit that is less square footage than what we came to you for, and we're giving a variance per a taller building, and that's in a bigger addition on that end of the building, which was approved by a prior board with literally not a lot of opposition. Uh, people were just concerned about what it might look like. Uh, I can say that, you know, Ken's does a nice product there. We are going to, I know we have to go to conservation, I know we're probably in front of planning board. Uh, we believe that this is going to be an issue and something that we're going to continue to speak about. I spoke to Ken's, they're, they're happy to let the Butters do their, their own noise study, and then we'll look at it. But we paid for one, and we did one, addressing what we felt was the focus of what they wanted to hear about. Okay? Uh, with that, I know you got a lot of information that came in, and you probably have a lot of people sitting in the audience that want to talk now that, on behalf of Deb or her attorney as well. Uh, one thing I would point out after, after I did talk to the attorney was that, uh, the first thing he said, talks about is a curb cut here at this location. Uh, there's been a curb cut at this location since I was twenty years old. I am now seventy. And it was expanded when Verizon went in there, and it's been active there ever since, back in the, uh, nineteen seventies, I think, was Verizon first went in. Uh, that intersection has also been studied, I was chairman of the four ninety-five partnership. And when we worked with Mast dot on all the EMC property across the street, we looked at that whole intersection where the other road comes in on the other side. The whole access at Ken's was studied by DOT, and they designed like ramps and flyovers and everything there, so there, there's a pre-existing, uh, curb cut there that's been there for years, and when we did our renovation, we didn't change it. We just tapered the, the edges properly and put curbing in and that type of thing. I was out there with Mast dot last month, and with Verizon, with, uh, the utility, because there's a pole there that all of Route nine's electricity is on, and it's apt to get hit at some point, and we want to move it. So they were out there looking at that intersection again, and where our curb cut was, and we were trying to figure out where that pole could be moved. And, you know, so all I can say is Ken has been and will continue to be a good neighbor. Uh, but I feel that we shouldn't be mixing whether or not we meet the criteria for a special permit for an innocuous add-on, uh, uh, on a building, which, you know, you could equate to another room being built on your house. Uh, I know that the lawyer said, oh, it's three hundred and twenty-five feet from the, the side setback. Well, the side setback in the industrial district is fifty feet. We're a long way from where we need to be. Uh, and we're not trying to pull a fast one, we've always worked with people, when there was a problem with the trucks going on eighty-five, we got a call, Jim addressed it again. Uh, and we're going to continue to do that. I would just hope that this board would look at what we're here for, and understand that we're going to have to live with D E D, if D E D feels that we need to do something, we have to do it. But we're willing to work with the sound people to get there.
Okay.
With that, I'll, I'll rest and let you let other people into the conversation.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Um, and so I, I just want to, first of all, just modify slightly, I, I, I heard exactly what you're saying about the curb cut. I think the, the, the proper way to say it is they can't find the permit for it, doesn't mean there wasn't one, it means they can't find it. And I, I think, I think it's, it's a good point to say, we've, we've gone through this existence proof other times before, and say, we can't find it because it was done X number of years ago. Does not mean it doesn't exist, means we don't have paper, paper proof of it. Okay, but I, so I just wanted, I just wanted, uh, um, throw that in there. Actually, um, Mike, do you want to, do you want to start, since you had a good close look at the property?
Yeah, for, um, what I, what I did is with David, uh, I did a site visit uh, at both Dave's house and, and Debbie's, um, just so I could really try to understand the lay of the land to see where the issues were. I didn't go inside the, the facility, uh, but I did do a complete walk-around, uh, got a really good understanding of my perception of, of the, both the application, the intended use for the special permit, as well as the, what I can, what my perception was is areas of, of noise are concerned for, for Butters specifically, Debbie. And, um, I was at her property, and that too was super helpful, um, because what happens is the, the topography of her home's location, and I think her immediate Butters' location, is this, that the sound is traveling up from, um, from Ken's Route nine, that whole direction, it just kind of, kind of comes up. The sound just kind of raises up through, so Debbie's a little bit higher up, and the sound seems to travel right up uh, that hillside towards their house. So you've got trees, 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 and then kind of like landscaping, and I think that sound kind of, uh, hits them. Debbie had forwarded me a video that was taken by her, one of her Butters, uh, her next-door neighbor, excuse me, about, you know, um, some of the noises, issues, uh, that had been presented. No, I, I definitely understand Bill's position on this, before us tonight is a special permit for an addition, um, that the petitioners have stated that this is not going to add any additional volume, that this is going to be additional space for their facility, and it's on the complete opposite side, and so, you know, I, I reread the special permit, and the language is with respect to granting a special permit, and what we're trying to do, no, there's no special, I'm, I'm, I'm looking exactly at, uh, section one seventy-four dash nine. Shall not be substantially detrimental or offensive neighborhood or destructive values therein, in addition, the following special requirements comply, et cetera, et cetera. And so the question is, um, is this addition, yeah, I want to hear from the Butters, but my concern is that is this addition on this site going to be more detrimental to those Butters? And I think that's the topic for our board tonight. But as far as the site visit and the facilities, I see that what I think are the pressure points of concern, my perception is that, where the structure is, you know, i- i- if Debbie could have, uh, and I don't want to speak for her, but if she could have the parking and the trucking reversed, that would ameliorate her concerns, but obviously present concerns for the opposite of Butters, so I, 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 I see the issues before them, and I look forward to discussing all these matters with the board, but, you know. That's, that was my perception of being at both locations.
Uh, if I, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Mike, I believe the film that you saw might have been taken by Chuck Agan.
I believe that's the case, yes, the next-door neighbor.
Yeah, I don't know if there was ever one done by anybody else.
I agree, uh, it seemed pretty contemporan, uh, contemporaneous, the sound, I mean, I, I can't, it's complete hearsay, if we want to use a, 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 you know, a legal term in this setting, but at the same time, taking it on its face value.
I was like, yeah, I wouldn't want that either, but again, I, 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 I question, and I hear your points with respect to, we're not here for adding or changing this side of, of this building, that we're, we're talking about a request for a special permit on the opposite side that petitioner is asserting is not going to, uh, you know, impact, increase the impact, so that, that's going to be for us to discuss. Uh, was there any other point you wanted me to specifically hit upon? I also, I'm so embarrassed to say it, um, I took a walk down, is it Orchard? Is it Orchard, it's the?
No, Orchard's off, uh, that one off flag, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like right, it's directly.
North, that's, they're north of the, of the facility.
Yeah, it's, and honestly, the sound was much more audible from Debbie's location, unquestionably. But just from a, just from a sound, I tried to get a, a complete picture of, of the whole area, including being up on Deerfoot, I was up at the, uh, vet's office and tried to get a complete picture of the entire area, so.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Paul, did you want, do you have questions for Mr. Pizzoni or?
I, I don't have any additional questions that I didn't have from last month. I mean, it just, I guess to reiterate, my concerns last month was, you know, was there going to be any increase in, in noise levels, and it, it appears that's, you know, it was discussed last month and just discussed again now that there's not going to be a increase due to this proposed addition. You know, also, my question from last month was on lighting, which was addressed, and, um, you know, more of a comment than a question that some of others of us had, I think, maybe I think Doris did too perhaps, about the, you know, the traffic, the, the, the traffic patterns that the trucks may sometimes take that are not right. Um, I noticed, you know, four or five years ago, when I was first hearing about this, it was, it was worse, um, so it seems to be not as bad. You know, most of what I would see was that U-turn on Route nine there, which instead of doing the clover leaf at eighty-five, um, which would back up traffic on Route nine, but I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that occur as much, so it's getting better, or at least, you know, every now and then something might happen, but I don't see the same, uh, frequency. I do understand, however, there is, there is, and there is a noise concern, um, and it appears, you know, it appears to be mostly coming from the, you know, from the west side, not where the proposed addition is on the east side. And so, y- you know, I feel that there, you know, although it's maybe not what's on the table here, but maybe, you know, to address that, perhaps some type of, you know, some type of mitigation could take place to, to help alleviate that. I thought it was an interesting comment, um, that was made by, um, I believe, I believe by, by Kevin from, you know, the, you know, there, that uh, that Bill brought up about the snowbank, how that kind of, I guess, dampens some of the noise. You know, perhaps some type of a, you know, you know, berm or a hill with trees would, would be a decent permanent-type solution to that. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a noise expert, um, I have seen that on, at projects, quite often down south Florida, more to keep the noise up, you know, from, mostly from highway, you know, from highway noise, but I see that used quite effectively where you, you build up, you know, you build up a hill or a berm, and then, you know, plant, you know, dense vegetation on top of it. And it seems to be something that, you know, developers do to help keep the noise levels down on the houses they're trying to sell, so to say, so that's, that's kind of my kind of thought or, uh, you know, thought, thought into maybe, you know, doing something like that on the, on the, on the west end of this to, you know, to help, to help mitigate what, you know, currently does exist. Those are, those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Paul. Craig?
Yeah, I, two things, um, I want to kind of echo what Mike was saying in regards to the fact that, you know, what we're asked to look at is the impact of this addition, um, and its potential increase, substantially detrimental increase to what exists now. So I think kind of keeping that in mind as we hear the rest of the comments is going to be important. I also want to caution us from overstepping our purview. You know, this will go in front of planning board for site plan review, they are typically the ones that talk about vegetative screens and berms and the like. And it will go in front of conservation commission for wetlands and stormwater retention and things of that nature. So I know in the, in the letter we got, it mentioned a bunch of those things that aren't in our purview. We have been, we have had our hands slapped, so to speak, for what people perceive as us overstepping in the past. So, um, you know, I think it would be important for us to really kind of stick to, as Aldo has always told us, the four corners of what's in front of us.
Thanks, Craig. Uh, Doris? You're on mute, you have to come off mute first.
Yeah. Um, at our last meeting, um, I felt very satisfied in the, answering the questions that I had. And in coming to this meeting, I just had a, a hope, um, that there would just be, outside of what we need to decide on tonight, I, I echo a lot of what Craig is saying, that there would be some, um, steps in a, in a, in a good direction, um, outside of a feeling of pressure. To decide on something, one, I don't have the expertise, and, and I do tend to think it's outside of what the applicant's asking for. Now, they're asking to put with no impact on a different side of the location, a, um, a storage facility. So I, you know, Attorney Pizzoni, I, I hear your frustration, um, in that regard. The, the, so what's escalating, and it is something I consider, what's escalating is there's no mitigation, this doesn't feel as though we're, we're having any mitigation process. Um, and I do have a concern, it was in my last, um, set of meeting notes, that as we go forward, the conditions, the conditions in the last special permit, they're just not being met. So I just need, I'd like to hear a little bit more feedback on that. Why put a condition in? Why put a condition in if it's the roads, because there's maybe a bit of a, you know, road? Why put a condition in? Or why put a condition into the sound wall in if it doesn't meet it? It doesn't meet it, so I, I think there's a failure either in, in, and a, a serious responsibility that those trucks don't go down the side roads. And that's something I'm very serious about, because that is within the corners of this application and the last special permit. Besides saying, um, we're going to do it, how do I know it's going to get done? Because it, and, and I don't, from the feedback and my driving up in the roads, it, it didn't happen. And now we have a very costly sound wall, and it is outside of the applicant, if there's no additional impact, that really needs a serious commit, commitment to get mitigated. There is noise, but it's not in the application. It doesn't appear to be in the application that you're, you're stating. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. I mean, maybe you could comment on that, what are we going to do about the traffic?
Sure, sure.
And, uh, and please, besides being upset, which is, I understand why people get upset. I, what are we going to do? What, what do you think you're going to do besides, oh, we're just going to work it out? Because now we have two attorneys, and that is really outside of this meeting. We've turned it to attorneys, that's never a good sign. Never a good sign of two attorneys going at it.
But if I could, uh, Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, uh, first of all, uh, the traffic turning out on Route nine, we try to monitor that on a daily basis. We don't control anybody that comes there, because they're not our workers. And all we can do is we find them, or we tell them they can't come anymore, that those drivers can't be there. But we don't know they're doing that unless somebody reports it. So the only time we know it's happened is when the police let us know, or the building department call us and let us know. When we do, Jim steps into it, he starts sending, he sends out more emails to all the drivers. You're not supposed to go there, it's posted in the facility. So we can, it's an ongoing process, because you get new drivers that come in, they hit their GPS, they do the wrong thing instead of doing the right thing. So I, you know, I lived in Southborough for thirty-five years, I understand issues that are out there on Route nine. Uh, the, the other part of it with the sound wall, the sound wall was specifically built in those conditions were placed in that other permit to protect the people on Orchard Road, you know, on, on, uh, what's that, that's, that's Deerfoot, in Deerfoot, yeah, okay? And when they talk about moving the wall, or building another one, they're talking about over in that area. They weren't talking about it the other end, they were talking about just in that area.
Right.
One of the things we went back and forth with when we wrote that condition was, we can't be at the mercy of just somebody saying, oh, it's too loud. They have to prepare a study that shows that we've got DEDs limitations, and then we have to deal with it. We took it on ourselves when Deb and Chuck brought this up. We know you guys don't want to pay for a study, but let's focus on what the study needs to be, and we'll pay for this portion of it. The permit, the original permit was, the onus is on the abutter or anybody else that's going to raise the issue. Ken's, I told you, we thought we were doing everything right. It wasn't until we filed this petition that I knew Deb was still having a problem up there. And it was for the first time I've heard people on Orchard Road complaining, yeah. And, and/or Deerfoot. So I, if, if the noise is over there, they haven't been calling who they were supposed to, which was the Board of Health or the Building Department, so we would know about it. Just all of a sudden, it's here today. How do we, how do we react if people aren't giving us a chance to react?
Yeah, I, I, I'm listening, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to listen, of course. I thought I read a letter, and, and there's definitely a communication that is outside the corners of this. There's a letter that seemed to detail all this communication that could have corresponded, that says the problem was ongoing. So either it's true or it's not true, that's all I'm saying. So I got a letter, now it said that could be true or not true, um, that says there was a step-by-step sets of communication between Ken's. Now maybe it went to the wrong person, but there has been communication, so.
Can, can you tell me when that letter came?
There's a letter, I think Deb attached to the meeting notes that says on this day, we spoke, on that day, we spoke. And, and when somebody, certainly when Deb joins in, I'm going to get corrected in some ways, but am I incorrect in saying that, Katie? There's a letter from Deb and it kind of outlines out, we talked, we didn't talk, I can pull it.
There's, yeah, no, I saw Deb's letter, but the letter she attached, I thought was from the Danines, or somebody did, back in two thousand fourteen, which is something we addressed back in two thousand fourteen. I'm talking about today. The only notice we ever got, and we had a poll of files from the police department, where we were called out to Chuck's, we were called out to Deb's, we went out there, we didn't hear anything. We came back again, we didn't hear anything. Oh, we came and we heard a little bit of something this time. So that's, and we responded to that, that's when we started meeting with them last year. But other than that, we have not heard anything from, remember, our permits were granted back in two thousand.
Absolutely, I absolutely know that, um, attorney. They were granted, and I understand, uh, also, uh, that you feel hostage, if I use your own words, you feel hostage that it's not in the application when you're doing a lesser thing, a lesser expansion on the other side of the building. But there are abutters that are complaining, so that's the problem, I understand the problem.
And, and like we said, and like the passports have said, if you're exceeding the DED standards and you have to bring proof forward to show that, we have to address it. That's separate and apart from this addition we're trying to put on. That's, and it's ongoing, that's going to be out there forever, it's regulated by the state. Anybody can often do that, but they have to bring forward substantive information and reports and studies to show that you're doing that.
If I could, if I could interject real quickly here, Bill, um, the, I would say that the condition in the earlier, an earlier special permit was all about the north side. And I think Debbie even admitted, like, there's really nothing in there that applies any longer. Because I read that a little bit more extensively today, and it, it talked just about that section. Didn't talk about any other place, talked about extending the trees. So I don't, I don't think that earlier condition applies here, is, is all I would, I would say.
And, and if, if I might, uh, back in all the prior hearings, we never heard anything from anybody up on Deerfoot Road that there was any noise on that end of the building. And that's where all the traffic was, except for two bay doors. Now, and, 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 you know, we know things change, and we just want to, we do want to be good neighbors.
Did you have anything more, Doris?
No, it, it's more of a comment that there's a set of parties that say they didn't hear, and there's a set of parties that said they communicated. So, I mean, that I don't need to hear more about.
Yeah, that, I mean, my understanding.
I don't need to hear more about that.
From talking to the building, uh, the building commissioner is, you know, there were some police reports, which Bill referenced, but I don't think she had anything else, other than those police reports, which seemed to be bunched up in, I think it was January, February of, of twenty twenty. Like, there was three of them. Okay. I'm sorry, Doris, are you, are you, are you set now, or?
Am I set? I'm definitely set, yes, I'm absolutely set, no problem. Thank you, Attorney Pizzoni.
Um, Jamie, you're, you're not a voting member on this board, but I don't know if there was something that popped up, something that you thought should be addressed.
Um, I just have a few thoughts, first of all, to understand what Mr. Pizzoni is saying, that are, are we too in the weeds about things that aren't relevant? But I also think that there's a reason we send these notices to all abutters, even if it's not the abutter who may be directly impacted, or as closely impacted where the addition will be. So I just think that's something to take into consideration, in addition with the fact that there's going to be construction noise, um, in addition to the noise that's already being complained about. I, I get it, it's, it's like we need to separate ourselves from an issue that was before. But I think the reason, and when Michael read that bylaw or the standard, there's a reason we contact all these abutters and find out what they think of this. And maybe some of them felt like they didn't have a voice before a new application came in front of them. Maybe they felt like, okay, now, now they want to build again, well, I'm, I'm not even happy the way it is now. So even if it's not directly impacting them, the new addition, that's kind of where their mind is. Um, and I think it's something to take into consideration. The only other thing I was going to say is that I, I live on Lover's Lane, so I walk down Orchard all the time. And I think that I can't hear anything, but the way the topography is, the houses at the end are kind of on a hill, and I don't think we would, just walking the street, we'd have to trespass into someone's backyard, um, to, to hear the actual sound. Those are just my two comments.
Thanks, Jamie. Um, I, I'm just, I'll just add in a little bit here. Um, I, I did see, uh, the site with, with, uh, Mr. Pizzoni and Mr. Born. I think, I think Mike and I would agree that there's little doubt that the refrigerated units would be the source of the issue. But I also agree that, uh, that the special permit is about an addition on the east side of the building. And I do think it's a mistake to conflate the two. I think we do need to listen to the concerns of the abutters. But, um, you know, I, I will add that, uh, I, because I ended up having some time there, uh, Mr. Born gave me a tour inside the facility, and what was noteworthy was that, you know, we could, we could converse at normal, at normal, uh, conversation levels, it's not noisy inside facility. The only, I guess clarification I would ask, Mr. Pizzoni, is in the addition, is that just more of the same warehouse operation that's going to be happening there? Like, in other words, should there be a concern of more noise in that addition versus the rest of the facility?
Actually, it's just going to be an expansion of the robotics and the racking.
Okay.
It's, it's going to be the same thing that's there.
Okay. All right. So it's the same thing that's there, and I, I'm just, I'm just noting as, as somebody who saw the facility that it was not something where it was, I'd say exceptionally noisy inside the building, which would make me think, you know, I don't think there's going to be much of an impact noise-wise outside the building either. So, uh, those are, those are my comments on it. Again, I do, my thought is, it is something that I think Ken should follow up on, um, but I don't think it's part of the special permit, so. Katie? Just a quick thing, I just want to, uh, just, I, my impression, uh, two, two separate points on this. The one point I wanted to make, I didn't think it was the refrigeration trucks, to be honest. I thought that those ran pretty quietly. I think the noise that I heard the most acutely was when, because the trucks need to turn off, they don't idle, it's the starting and stopping and restarting of those trucks, um, as they load into the bays. So like, I didn't think, my perception wasn't, wasn't the refrigeration trucks. I think it's a, it's, I think it's a cacophony of the trucks, the refrigeration, the flow, Route nine, and all of that sound is then coming up, unfortunately, to Debbie and her direct neighbor. I think the sound literally, the, the topography of the, of the land brings that up. I thought Jamie's point, um, was really great, this is why we have this language, that's why abutters are noticed, and that's why we're here. Yes, I agree that these are separate issues, but those, you know, I thought the way that Jamie framed it with respect to, a lot of times people just kind of, no, I don't have anything else to, you know, a way to deal with it, except now. So I'm interested to hear what the abutters have to say. But I, I do agree that we as a board, and as an attorney that deals with other boards, you know, Craig had mentioned overreach, uh, and I'm really cognizant of what our role is. Our role is the zoning board, or it laid out in our rules, and, you know, I've said it before, but, you know, we just need to call balls and strikes here. The petition that's before us is for an addition on the opposite side. I want to hear those abutters, I want to hear what's going on, but I really want us to, to focus in on what our role is, both for the petitioner and also for the abutters. I mean, they have to, everyone has to live with this, so, uh, let's just figure that out. And I look forward to hearing, um, uh, those abutters. All right. Hi, Katie, I think we could probably let, uh, some of the abutters in, or the public.
Yep, the first person with their hand up is, uh, Mr. Bartolini.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Jack.
All right, sorry about that, I have a problem here. I want to speak, uh, I, I own the property across the street on, uh, um.
Uh, Jack, Jack, sorry, if you, if you could, just.
Oh, John Bartolini Jr., Four Wire Circle, Southborough, Massachusetts. My brother and I own the property across the street at, uh, two seventy-eight, two seventy, uh, two seventy-six, two seventy-eight, two eighty, Turnpike Road. I just want to bring up, I'm going to go in a different direction here. The drainage on, on that piece of Route nine goes from south to north. And I just want to make sure, I haven't seen these plans, I did talk to Bill, uh, a while ago, I'm sorry I missed the first meeting. But the, uh, I just want to make sure that the, uh, with all these talks of berms and things, that the drainage is not impeded from the south side of Route nine to the north side of Route nine as it travels through this property. Uh, I've worked with Ken's before, they're very good people to work with. We had a horrific problem with beavers a couple of years ago, and they took care of it. Actually, it took about two years to get, to, to straighten out the beavers. But, uh, we worked with their engineers and my engineers, and they did a wonderful job. But my concern is the, uh, the flow of the drainage from the south, uh, side of, uh, uh, nine to the north side. I just want to be on the record for that, other than that, I have no problem with this.
Okay. Great, thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack. Thank you.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
All right, great, thank you, this is David Sears, seventy-four Deerfoot Road. First, I'd like to thank Jamie for her comments, especially about a butter's not feeling a bad a voice in the past. I, I, I don't think I could agree with that even more. Secondly, the, the board appears to have many new members since the last application several years ago. I wanted to thank, thank you all, as it appears, really disappear that you all truly respect Southborough residents, especially the abutters. So a sincere thank you, this is a very different experience than, than last time. It, and despite the fact that I like Mr. Pizzoni personally, um, he keeps using the term innocuous, um, for the building addition. And I just can't agree with that term, and I think anyone living across the street from where it's going to be on Deerfoot, such as, you know, my property and I'm up high, and especially seventy-six Deerfoot, my neighbors who are on the, on, are listening in as well here, and some folks on Kenley Lane. I, I think it's fairly irrefutable that the larger and closer, you know, any commercial building is to pretty much any residential property, it's, it's going to, it's going to more, it will affect and lower our property values. Um, I, I really don't have much in the way of comments, other than one, one more thing, as we, we briefly discussed during the last meeting, um, the condition that the board had required Ken's to adhere to with the previous permit application process, um, which involved planting, uh, some trees on the front areas of two properties across the street, my, my property, and again, seventy-six Deerfoot. Um, I believe it was board member, Mr. Nicholson, who, um, last time may have implied the, that the condition should be considered as potentially back on the table. Um, I, I would like that to be a reality. Um, I, I realize that the building was tall last time, but it wasn't any closer this time, it's a lot closer. But it isn't tall, it isn't taller, or, uh, regardless, um, I'm fairly certain it's, it's, it's not very debatable that, that, you know, again, a commercial property, the closer it is, it's, it's going to affect our property values. And, um, I, I think my neighbor and I would welcome a conversation with, um, with, uh, Mr. Pizzoni, Mr. Born, who, who we spoke the last time, to revisit that, uh, condition from several years ago. But, um, thank you all, and, and seriously, Bill, thank you too.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Williams, if I could, just, I want to make a clarification.
Yep, you may.
Yeah, the other addition was actually a bigger footprint and came just as close to your property and went up another 20 feet. So it would have been a lot closer to your property, and it would have been much more imposing. The other point is, I can see where you might be able to see it in your next door neighbor. I'm not sure how Kenley Lane could see it, because you've got so many trees there. And we're 320 feet from the property line, which isn't even the street line at Deerfoot. And it's all treeed in there. So, you know, I know that when we put it in at the last time, it was to address those issues with the height of the building and it being so much closer to you. So, you know, I honestly don't think it should be imposed in this one, but I leave that to the board.
Okay.
I hope that doesn't change.
Bill, I love you. You've got your job to do, and I've got mine, we've both got to do, both have to do what we have to do to preserve our own values. I'm also telling, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, this is Nathaniel Stevens, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I'm Nathaniel Stevens from McGregor &amp; Legere in Boston, and I represent Debbie and Kevin Farrington of 58 Flag Road. I submitted a letter yesterday detailing how the proposed expansion of Ken's Foods does not meet the standards for special permit. Debbie's and Kevin's sound expert, Mark Wallace, would like to speak after me. Given the existing and historic noise and traffic issues of the current facility, this operation is presently failing the standards for special permit because its benefits are not outweighing the adverse effects on the town, the neighbors, the health, and the safety of the town residents. It's not in harmony with the purposes of the zoning bylaw, it is in conflict with public health. We have not seen sufficient evidence that the proposed addition will not change this balance. For instance, while Ken's Foods stated at your last hearing that it would be a wash in terms of truck traffic, and additional, whether there'd be additional truck traffic, they did not specify whether the mix of truck traffic would change, whether it would be at different hours, or whether there'd be fewer or more refrigeration units. You've heard from neighbors at your last hearing about the noise and experience since they've had vibrations to their chests and their ears, and have had, and have some property owners, Butters, have had to use earplugs in their, for sleeping in the bedrooms that are facing Kens. I believe that was on the east side of Butters, on the east side. You also have a letter from Debbie more recently, and then an earlier letter from both her and Kevin detailing these adverse effects. We don't believe that they should have to incur the costs to undertake an expensive sound study, as Attorney Pizzoni suggests, to have their grievances addressed by the zoning board. These noises and vibrations are at night and early in the evening. We don't believe that any of the zoning board members have visited the site at those hours. Obviously, perhaps for good reason. But we don't believe that sufficient due diligence has been done on this. These sounds and vibrations are disrupting people's lives and their ability to work. This operation is significantly affecting their use and enjoyment of their properties. These rights should not be outweighed by the existing or potential additional tax revenues from Kens to the town of Southborough. We agree with the letter that you received yesterday from the Southborough Board of Health that the addition should not be allowed until the noise issues are identified and mitigation is addressed. We also note that the existing operation is about seven times that that is allowed in an industrial district as of right. The petitioner has not explained how adding to this operation to allow it to become nine times larger than what is allowed by right will change the current balancing of the detrimental effects. Please also remember that this site abuts a residential zoning district. In fact, part of the Kens property is within the residential zoning district. I did look, I did watch the meeting of your, for your April 21 hearing, and that was left off with Kens agreeing to regroup by Attorney Pizzoni saying he would speak with Kens about possible measures, and also continue to work with the neighbors. My clients weren't contacted by Attorney Pizzoni until just a few days ago. Clearly, with the existing noise issues not addressed, and the applicant having not sufficiently demonstrated how the new facility will not add to these issues, we asked the ZBA to deny this special permit. In the alternative, we asked that the ZBA continue this matter to another night to give everyone more time to work on this and see what solutions can be developed and included as possible special permit conditions. Again, at your last meeting, there seemed to be consensus among the board members that developing special permit conditions that are feasible and that will adjust the ongoing issues of noise should be included and discussed with the public. For instance, we need more information about the new automation equipment that's being, that says in the application will be put in this addition. What noise will it create? What hours will it be operated? What other operations will be put in this addition or moved around the existing building? These things may have a bearing on the sounds emanating from the facility and disturbing the neighbors. Mr. Wallace can provide a list of things that he would need to help to look into these to determine what the sources of the noise are, as well as possible remedies. My clients are interested in solutions that work and don't want to have Kens spend money on things that don't work. That doesn't benefit anyone. We again respectfully request that the hearing be continued if you don't deny the special permit application outright to allow time to develop and discuss with public input possible meaningful conditions to address these real and valid concerns of residents of the town of Southborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Minakshi, I'm Snares wife, and I live in 76 Deerfoot Road. And I just wanted to understand, we are new to Southborough area, and then our experience living in this location has been like one year. And obviously, we see a lot of things. And one thing, Mr. Pizzoni mentioned that there are trees, and we don't see it. We clearly see everything, even the, there are like construction equipments on this side of the Deerfoot Road, we see everything. So I wanted to understand what is being done to make sure it's not going to increase more noise on our side. And I echo with the comment that Dave has about the visual. What is being done if, on that side of the property, to maybe like minimize the noise and help us on our side with the visual and the noise both? Thank you.
Thank you very much, I wasn't sure if you were done, but I just wanted to say thank you for your comments on that.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, my name is Mark Wallace. I am a Vice President at Tech Environmental. We are located at 303 Wyman Street, Suite 95 in Waltham, Massachusetts. I'm a sound consultant with over 33 years of experience addressing noise issues in the New England area. I was retained to perform a peer review of the June 12, 2020, Kens Foods facility noise analysis prepared by David Coe Consulting, and had forward a copy of my letter to the board. I would like to just provide a brief summary of my findings. The sound study included both onsite and community noise measurements to address complaints about truck noise from the neighbors on the west side of the facility. Specifically, the sound study focused on truck refrigeration units and its possible potential for low-frequency noise impacts. The sound study primarily focuses on the results of unattended sound monitoring, where there was no observer to accurately document the sound contribution from the refrigeration trucks at 24 and 58 Flag Road. This approach does not follow proper acoustic standards and procedures, nor the MASDEP procedures to assess whether a facility is in compliance. The sound study also assumes that the nuisance noise that abutting neighbors have complained about is attributed from trucks. However, the sound study does not assess if objectional sounds are coming from other sound sources. Overall, it's my expert opinion that the sound study does not follow proper acoustic standards and procedures to assess compliance with the MASDEP noise regulations under 310, CMR 7.10, and the MASDEP noise policy requirements. In order to properly assess the sound impacts from the existing and future expansion of the facility and to possibly work collaboratively with Kens Foods to solve the noise problem, I recommend the following information be provided. Log reports of the trucking and loading dock operations for the existing facility during the time that the David Coe Consulting sound study was performed. The raw sound data files from that study. Manufacturing specifications and sound data for the existing and future expansion rooftop HVAC equipment. Any future changes in hours of operation of trucking and loading dock area related to the expansion. And a list of equipment and sound specification data for outdoor indoor mechanical equipment, such as waste compactors and other hydraulic and compressor equipment for both the existing and future expansion. I thank you for the opportunity to provide my summation of my peer review and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark, thank you. I don't see any other hands up at the moment.
You don't? Okay. I was gonna say, Mr. Pizzoni, you like to respond, I imagine you would.
Yes, yes, well, a couple of things. The, what people don't understand, we're here for a special permit for an extension on the east side of that building that's really just three walls tying it into there. There's gonna be no other activity on that outside, it's gonna be like they're looking at the same building only 50 feet closer. Okay, which isn't even to where the parking lot is, or isn't even to where the retention pond is, or even isn't close to where the fence is on the Kens property. So it's not gonna change from a visual aspect that much from over there. And there's not gonna be any activity on that side of the building. So there's no increase in activity over there. We did tell you there's gonna be no increase at the site because right now there are trucks coming from Kens, dropping stuff off and going back and forth. They're not gonna have to do that any longer, because we're gonna have a larger capacity. So there's gonna be less truck traffic during the day. As far as the Board of Health letter, it really doesn't say anything other than they received a few comments from people that there's a noise issue. They didn't look into it, they didn't review the study. I know that Paul Fazinski had started looking at this over a year ago, and they deferred to DDP to do their bidding, okay? As far as the sound study goes, we stand beside it. As I said, the first sentence defines the scope of what the study is gonna be in that first paragraph. And it was because that's what the neighbors, and that's what Kens thought the issue was. If Kens isn't gonna pay for a full sound study for something that they don't think exceeds the standards. The opportunities there for the community, the neighbors, they've hired a peer reviewer, let him do his study. We didn't have somebody sit up in Deb's backyard for the four days while this was going on to monitor the equipment, because we didn't think she was gonna want somebody there. And also, the, and I think the peer reviewer will agree that what we did was we determined a baseline for what the sound of the refrigeration was. And that gives you something that you can go off of. And, you know, it's not like we were trying to pull a fast one. When we did the study, we were commissioned to look into and to do, and what we thought was the issue. If there's a further issue they think it is, if they can do their own sound study, we're happy with that. As far as Mr. Stevens' position, I stand by my submitted, which outlines how Kens meets the criteria for a special permit for what, you know, and I won't call it innocuous again, for an addition on that side of the building with no windows, no doors, that isn't gonna impact any noise over on that side. I just think that, you know, we need to look at what the jurisdictional requirements are for your board, what the jurisdictional requirements are for other boards. There are other jurisdictional avenues with DEP to address the sound. I will commit, the Kens will continue to try to work with the community, because they don't want to be bad neighbors, but they don't want to be held hostage to get a permit that should be really not that big, you know, I don't want to say that. Shouldn't be that insurmountable to give for this type of addition that isn't gonna impact really anybody. With that, I'll just, I'll just rest. I'll let you guys ask questions if you want.
Did any of the board members want to ask additional questions following the public comment of Mr. Pizzoni? Or discuss it any further? Mark, great. Mike, you good?
Just as, like, I don't know if Debbie's in attendance or not, I always like to hear directly. I know her attorney's here, but I don't know if she wanted to speak to any point. If not, or Kevin, I just, it's one of those things, I just want to make sure every voice is accounted for. If not, I say let's close the, you know, if she's not, they're not...
I'll just note like that, when I did talk to Debbie earlier this week, I think she said she actually would prefer not to, because I think she's a little worked up. And so the attorney really spoke for her, so, no.
I hope she doesn't mind me speaking for her, but I was just gonna share, that was our conversation.
Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure we're getting all the voices, so we can consider everything, best we can. But I spoke to them, both Debbie and Kevin, and, you know, I feel those issues, how this affects their daily life, so I really, I feel that directly. But if that's, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
There is another hand up.
Okay, great.
From the Board of Health, if you wanted to hear them first.
Yep. Please do.
Hi, Heather Alker from Board of Health. I only joined into this position mid-January, so obviously, this is all new to me. And I was able to attend the meeting a month ago. And I understand how the, you know, the west side and Deb, that's sort of a different issue than the current proposal. But my concern tonight was, and unfortunately, I was in another meeting at the same time, so I only heard some of the Butters, but David Sears. There may have been another. My memory, from a month ago, there were other Butters on that east side who were concerned about this proposed expansion. But did we just hear less of them tonight?
Yeah, they gave their comments, so they are part of the record, they don't need to come back and make the same comment.
Right.
Okay, got it, okay.
We just heard, we also had a letter from Marnie Hulahan on this as well.
Okay. Right, and I don't, you know, I can't speak to other avenues of reporting, but I certainly did hear that last meeting, that we definitely were concerned from the Butters about this current proposal.
Correct, right.
Okay.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other hands up, Katie?
Not see any.
And I'm gonna resubmit my motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing, seconded, all in favor. Aye, Doris.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
And aye for Williams. Right? Okay, the public part of the meeting is closed. I don't know if we want to discuss anything. Additional before going directly to a vote. Consideration of conditions or just a vote?
No, I just. I thought Debbie and Kevin's Kevin's attorney did a good job raising his positions as as well as Bill for his. Mr. Sears and the other abutters. I hear all those voices and at the same time I look at the structure. And the proposed addition and I just. Those sound issues. I think are genuine. I think they are a point of concern. I don't think that this addition is going to affect that. I think. I think that is a separation. They are building an addition on the other side of the building. There are, I think, genuine. Concerns that need to get addressed. But I just, my position on this is the special permit. Is this addition gonna be substantially more detrimental than what's existing there now? And what's existing there now, I'm not saying is acceptable. That's a different story. Enforcement's a different story, but the petition that's before us is aborted tonight. The way I see this is they wanna build this addition. That's less in size than what was previously approved. It's still substantially quite a distance from Deerfoot Road, having been on site and knowing what the size that they're intending to put in at the at the the same height. I honestly think once it's built. People won't even be able to tell the difference what was there before and what's there now. So, you know, it's my position that the issues are genuine, they're real, but I I don't. See how the the petitioner's request to build an addition on the opposite side. Impacts or is more detrimental than what's existing now.
Yep. Craig.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo that comment from Michael. There were a couple of other comments that got brought up. You know, in terms of drainage, which. You know, I want to just make sure everybody understands we'll go in front of Conservation Commission. They will be looking at that. Mr. Sears mentioned the trees. I did mention whether that should be on the table. I don't think it should be a condition. I think we can. Probably take a vote on a separate motion outside of this to send a letter to the planning board. Kind of highlighting the concerns that we had and the neighbors had as part of this process to ensure that they look at those issues. So. You know, it's not that we're not hearing them. It's just, again, looking at this specific application. The addition does not seem to be making. The existing noise concerns substantially worse. And there is benefit to the town. There is increased tax base. There is. Fees for building. There's there's other things of that nature that will benefit the town, and I think therefore we are. Within our four corners of what's in front of us. In a position to approve this.
Greg. Doris or Paul?
So. It's on the other side of the building. The petition says they're not gonna increase the impact. But with a great caution, and I wish I could place it in condition. With great caution, I I don't outside of this board. We had a series of experts say there's a problem and I would suspect they're just going to continue pursuing it through the process. I'd like to see more cooperation. On both sides. To resolve in serious of resolve, because I sense, what's the word, resistance. They're always wrong. I hope that's not the case. I hear on one hand, we cooperate, but that's not what you're saying. Because you don't agree, so is that cooperation? I I would strongly encourage and caution outside of this board to seriously. Come to some mitigation because those concerns are real. And on the other hand, inside the board. We're just looking at this petition at this location on the opposite side. And I I don't think there's something dubious. In requesting a lesser addition. So. That's and with some thoughts from the other members of the board. Because I do think there's a small pattern. And I do see it as a responsibility. If you place a condition on. I'm not seeing that solely as the Police Department, Health Department and the Conservatory Department to. You mitigate traffic. If we have a condition on, I I don't know what that condition's gonna look like. I want it to stick. I I don't wanna be backed. I'm one of those accountability people. I wouldn't wanna be backed. It would affect. It would affect the way I think about and I think very highly of Ken's. I truly appreciate the increase in the tax base. That would be good. But that needs to solve. The noise problem needs to solve and the truck problem in my mind outside this application. Strongly encouraged to solve it.
Yeah. Well said. Paul, anything?
Not much. I I I agree with Mike's assessment of the request. And I also like the idea that Craig had about. I guess outside of our decision. A letter of concerns to to pass along to the other to the other boards that need to to hear about this. And that's that's. That's all I have to say at this point further.
Okay. Final thoughts, Jamie?
Um, nothing major. I I understand the point of the petition. I I don't love the wording of being held hostage, and I also don't like the wording that. Well, this is a give me permit. We're just gonna give this. It was not an attic, so why are we questioning it now? I think that kind of questions why we have a board in the first place. So I understand what you're saying about how typically this would this would be an easier. Confirmation without these sound issues. I also think that Mr. Pozzoni. Opens the door to the butter complaints when he said, oh, we haven't heard anything. Well, there are there are complaints, so I I. Completely understand both sides. I just wanted to point that out. I I don't get a vote, so those are my thoughts.
And so I'll I'll thank you, Jamie, and everyone. I'll I'll try to be brief here. I I do, I think I echo what Craig and Mike and Paul have said that the the this is a there is a serious sound issue. But I think Ken's needs to address, but I do not think. That has any connection to the 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 special permit application in this case. I I would say history would suggest that they are good neighbors, and I don't have any reason not to believe them that they're gonna continue to be good neighbors. So I think the idea of sending something to the planning board is good. I I also actually just wanted to make a minor point where where Mr. Pozzoni noted that the Board of Health submitted. You know, a memo, but but he's correct in saying that all it really did is said their neighbors have concerns. There's no. Data saying this is the problem, so. I think that's separately. I think that's to be pursued separately, so. All right, that's it. I said my piece.
I will. Move to grant the special permit application. For three twenty-five Turnpike Road.
I'll start with that.
I have a motion. We have a motion to approve the special permit as written with a second. All in favor, say aye. Doris?
I wanna write a condition. Do I do that to the procedural question, David?
Well, we 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 had a we had a motion and it was seconded, so now. We need to vote on it.
Just yes or no, no conditions?
Yeah, correct. You know, just it's just for, this is a procedural. If if you if you wanted to add a condition or change that, you'd vote no. But it's just a, I think it's just.
Well, I mean, she can just, we can discuss, and if she wants to make another proposal, she may or.
Yeah.
I think you can ask to amend the. The.
The 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 motion on the, right, okay.
Yeah, and then we'll vote on whether or not we accept that.
Amendmented motion? That makes sense. That would follow the.
Yeah, it's just a matter of order and and. And you need someone to correct me, so I would make a motion. Say this wrong. I'd make a motion to. Amend. The vote for a condition. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, I think I think what you wanna do is is. Move to amend the motion to add a condition to the approval.
Wow, I moved to make a motion to amend the condition, the approval proposal.
And 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 what's the condition that you'd like that?
The proposal would be, and certainly with the support of you guys, the proposal would be. And you correct me, is a continuance of the. Traffic monitoring commitment to the traffic monitoring and approval of special permit. There's a special permit number, maybe three or four years ago, that just to recommit to that. Is traffic shouldn't increase according to the permit. But the turning of middle reiterate it for word for reiterate. The middle road and the Flag Road turnabouts. Are to be. Monitored. I could use the same wording, in fact, of the other. Special permits.
So Craig, what's the what would be the procedure here? Do we we need to vote on the amended motion first like town meeting does, or how does it work?
We need to the.
We'd have to have someone second what she's proposing.
That's what I was.
Right, that under.
Okay, do we have a second to the amend to Doris's amended motion?
I I do not. Second it, and I would propose that as stated by Craig was adequate. And I understand Doris's concern and statement. And I think that would be best. Addressed in this. Letter that that Craig had referenced that we do to send this along. Because I don't believe. Like the ongoing monitoring of traffic is. Is like germane to what the the request for the special permit is here.
Yeah.
Find it adequate if Greg puts it in the letter specifically on is sound and traffic control to the planning board that. That would be, I see your point. That would be adequate for me.
Okay, can you withdraw your motion then?
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my motion. To. All right, okay.
So that brings us back to the original motion, which which was to approve it as written, seconded by Paul. So. Back to the original motion, Doris, how do you vote?
I'm in favor of giving Ken's food the special permit to have a lesser addition, yes.
Paul?
I vote yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And Williams, aye as well. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Pozzoni.
And if Nathaniel's still on the phone, give me a call over the next couple of days. But give me a reprieve tomorrow because I became a grandfather today.
Congratulations, Bill.
Welcome to the club.
Good for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, so before we really leave this topic. What are what exactly do we want to capture the memo to the to the planning board that are our concerns?
You know, I think the the main things that we're asking them to look at in terms of the site plan review are. Berms and plantings on the west side of the property. To mitigate noise. As well as. Free plantings along the east side of the property. To mitigate sightlines for the people on Flag Road. We can, we will also mention that. You know. We are interested in anything they can do to. Further the monitoring of truck traffic.
And traffic patterns, right?
Yeah.
Did we want to address? I thought we had done that adequately in the last meeting, address soil drainage.
That's really, that's really conservation.
Yeah, because that was addressed on the last meeting too.
Yeah, I I I I always feel like the 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 issue that's brought up where it's inadequate drainage, if it's going to conservation. Really should be addressed by by conservation. I think, so. So. Visual, yeah. Yeah, I don't I don't. Okay, and we don't, I mean, I don't think we wanna go down the path of. Ken's commits to continuing to work with the neighbors. I mean, that's. I don't think that's a good condition.
No, and these are.
Suggestions.
Yeah, these are highlights of our concerns. That got brought up. That we did not feel were in our purview to. Provide conditions on, but wanted to ensure the appropriate boards were aware of.
Right, okay. Okay, so. All right.
We should bring Debbie back in. I think. If she's still there.
I I do want to mention there is another hand up. I don't know the public.
Yeah, we don't really have a a public comment. Section of our meetings, so. We do see that Mr. Sears has his hand up. But I'm not sure we have a necessarily a venue to.
I mean. We 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 gave a pretty adequate period for public comment.
Well, I don't, my guess is he's not necessarily gonna talk about Ken's because we definitely can't hear anything about that. You know.
Okay.
I mean, if if his comment is about the special permit application, we definitely can't hear it.
It's almost ten o'clock. I just wanna be mindful of time here.
Yeah, I think. The only thing that left on the agenda was approval of minutes.
Yeah. So Mr. Sears, if you do have a comment that you would like us to hear, then I would suggest sending an email or giving a getting in touch with Katie.
Yeah, we definitely wanna hear them. We definitely wanna hear them, but you know. I'm running out of time.
Yeah, yeah, I I think we've been more than reasonable in terms of the terms of the time. So I would agree with what you're saying. He's certainly got the opportunity to to send us an email. I received other emails, so I don't. They certainly have that that ability, but I do think we we should try to. Close the meeting by by. Having a look at or discussing the minutes from the last meeting. I did take a look at them today. I mean, there was a lot there, but I mean, in my opinion, Katie did a really good job. I I I. Liked them the way they are. I don't know how everybody else felt about them.
I I I looked at them also, and I you're I agree there was it was quite a bit, but I. I, I, I looked at them also and I, you're, I agree, there was, it was quite a bit, but I, I do think it, it, it captured accurately what transpired.
Alright. Motion to approve the minutes is drafted.
I'll second that.
Alright, a motion to approve the minutes is written, seconded. All in favor? Say aye. Doris? Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Craig? And aye for Williams. Right, the minutes are approved. Before we leave, Katie, what, knowing that we just moved one to next month, what else, what are, what are we looking at in June?
So we do have that one. We have another another accessory dwelling that will be coming in June. And then we have an appeal that is with Aldo right now. So we'll be finding out soon if we're gonna move forward with that.
What's an appeal with Aldo?
There, there's appeal of a building permit for a, a large addition. The appeal is brought on by the butter, but no no real error was highlighted, but.
It's the one off of Sears, right?
It's presidential.
Presidential.
Yeah, yeah, the one we, we talked about, I talked about it with David and Michael. Yeah, I put it through just to see if there was any, any like to stand on as far as moving forward.
Yeah, that's, that just sounds unusual to me. I don't, I haven't, we haven't come across one like that yet.
I haven't.
Granted, and I'm unhappy and so, okay. Alright, and that, that is planned, planned for June 23rd, correct?
I think it was June 16th.
Oh, June 16th?
Yeah, yeah.
We all good with that date?
I'm good.
Okay. Alright. Paul?
I'd like to make a motion to close tonight's meeting.
We've got a second. Okay, motion to close and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Oh, yes.
Uh, Mike?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Craig?
Really wanna say no, just to say no.
Not recognized, Jamie?
For you instead then.
I didn't see it accurately in the minutes next month.
Just testing Katie, that's all. Alright, Williams, aye.
Alright.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Take care of. Being disappointing, so.
What?
I was just saying to Debbie, sorry for the decision being disappointing. I'm sure that's tough. So I just, I feel you, so. Yeah, I just want, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yeah, sucks.
Well, I thought that was difficult for me.
Do we need to be live? The meeting's closed.
No, we really should be off.
Take care, everyone.
Alright. Night, everybody.
Take care, everyone. Have a good evening.